Good evening. Now I'll call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. At this time, the board will go into closed session pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, consultation with attorney, 551.071, and personnel matters, 551.074. We will reconvene in open session no later than 7:00 p.m. Thank you. Good evening again to those of you who were here about 30 minutes ago. The board will reconvene in open session. We have been in closed session where no action was taken. This special business meeting of the Waco ISD Board is hereby called to order. All items discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to all of you present tonight and to those watching on TV. Let's hope we don't have any cable troubles tonight. I think last meeting, we had a little trouble. But I think that was with Spectrum, not us. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We're not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. At this time, I ask you to turn off your cellphone or turn it on silent if you haven't already. And again, we sincerely appreciate the time you have taken out of your lives to spend a little bit with us tonight. We have a very full agenda, a very important agenda, and we're glad that you're here. At this time, we have audience for guests, and I know we have some. First is Tracy Guillory. Oh, Carrie, are you our timer? Mr. Dupuy is our timekeeper. He does such a good job. At some point, but you're doing such a good job. We'll just leave it there for now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am presenting on behalf of attorney Chris Houston. She could not be here tonight and asked me to read her statement for her. Dear School Board Trustees, greetings from Chris Houston. Thank you for hosting this public forum for community members to be heard on the concerns that WISD faculty, staff, and students face as school reopens in the midst of the global coronavirus pandemic. Below are my concerns for your review. I respectfully urge you to issue a mask mandate for all WISD faculty, staff, and students in line with other Texas school districts that have put the safety of our fellow Texans first in the midst of a global pandemic unlike any other that we have seen in our lifetimes. Just today, Dr. Kelly Reynolds, the Deputy Chief Medical Officer at Waco Family Medicine, my place of employment, mentioned to me that masking is one of the most effective safety measures we can implement to ensure everyone's safety in our schools. I agree fully, as do the medical and science experts across the globe who are taking the pandemic seriously and doing all that can be done to ensure that we live through and shorten this extent of this pandemic. I also respectfully implore you to strongly consider housing GW Carver Middle School faculty, staff, and students in another location as opposed to housing them in Indian Springs Middle School along with the faculty, staff, and students who are already housed at Indian Springs. Temporarily, buildings, for example, are a great way to solve the problem caused by the recent fire at Carver Middle School. Social distancing is key in this pandemic and will not be possible if these schools combine operations such as combination will be a health and safety hazard to all involved given that the coronavirus cases are rising in light of the Delta, ETA, and Lambda variants, which are more contagious than prior COVID-19 variants. My reasons for this request are summarized below. Over 600,000 Americans and over 485 McLennan County residents have died from this disease. The Delta variant and lack of widespread vaccinations have led to the recent surge in coronavirus cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, particularly in areas like McLennan County. In India, 400,000 documented deaths from COVID-19 infection were the result of the Delta variant, but some experts estimate as many as 4 million may have died. Some populations we encounter here in Waco and WISD schools, such as children, have very low vaccination rates. Other populations here in Waco are schools such as immunocompromised faculty, staff, and students may be at risk of serious harm from COVID-19 infection even if vaccinated. WISD faculty, staff, and students may unintentionally spread COVID-19 when they are asymptomatic and unaware that they have the virus. As of Friday, new cases of COVID in McLennan County are up 46%, and there are no more ICU beds in Waco hospitals for COVID-19 patients due to the surge.
Are you close?
I am. I'm going to go down to her closing remarks. Okay. I understand. In closing, I urge you to consider requiring masks for all WISD faculty, students, and staff to avoid combining Carver Middle School and Indian Springs Middle School. Please feel free to contact me at 713-208-5808 if you have any questions regarding this matter. Thank you for your time and attention and consideration. Chris Houston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Casey Niemeyer, TEA. I think I might not have said your name right. Is that right, Niemeyer?
No, actually, you got it correctly. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's no small feat. I am a grandparent. No, I don't look like one, but yes, I am one of a four-year-old going into pre-K. And these are my concerns. We send our kids and grandchildren to school with presumption that they will be safe. In fact, the school guidelines, school makes guidelines so they are safe. Last year, the school system was thrown upside down when COVID-19 hit our students, his staff, as well as the education system itself. The districts did their best to learn as they were hit from every direction with funding, safety guidelines, and virtual learning. Now here we are in the 2021-2022 school year, and our students are being sent off to war. They are underprepared for what is about to assault them. The new TEA safety guidelines are no longer going to be safe in school. They will be sent to school with no social distancing or mask requirements. This is unfair to our children. We're expecting four- and five-year-olds to put masks on, or are we not? These are the new generation of our future, and we need to provide a safe environment for them to learn as well as to gain social skills which they did not have last year. Thank you for letting me speak.
Of course. Thank you for coming and sharing your concerns. Raylan Biford? Okay. Not many people do that by accident, I have to tell you. And then Jonathan, but whoever wrote me my notes said they couldn't read the last name on the form. Oh, my gosh, Grant? Man, Mr. Grant, your handwriting must be terrible.
I must confess it is. I don't have any prepared marks, but I am a parent of a Waco High graduate and a parent of a Waco High rising junior. My daughter has had COVID twice, and she's had the vaccine. My son was a football player last year and in quarantine tested positive. And when I communicated to Rhiannon Settles, which I felt like was the right thing to do, that he tested positive, a phone call was made, and his team was pulled off the field up in Dallas mid-game. Pretty humiliating for a 16-year-old kid, 15-year-old kid. All that to say, I must confess, I believe fervently that this conversation and this argument about whether to mask or not to mask has become a political debate at the cost of our children. My son does not need to be a pawn in that debate. He loves wearing his mask. He wants to feel safe, and I promise you, he does not want to be the reason his team is pulled off the field again. We can choose to call freedom our idol, or we can choose to put our kids and our teachers and our administrators in a safe position. We know how to do it. We've been doing it for a while, and we can do it a little bit longer. I beg and plead each of you to choose safety, to choose our kids, to choose health, to choose not having to shut this place down again, and to choose not having to pull my son off the field. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing your concerns with us. Sarah Beth, Stoltfus?
Hi. I didn't come prepared to speak, but I feel compelled to share. I am a local social worker, working with children and families for the last seven years here in Waco, and I'm just concerned about masking in schools. I'm in favor of masking in schools and having a mandate to mask in schools because younger kids, kids under 12, cannot get vaccinated, and they're left vulnerable going to school this year. Parents are worried. Parents are very concerned, and when parents are concerned, children are concerned and worried. This last school year, I know a lot of work was done to have virtual options, and I think that was wonderful, but we know that kids need to be in the classroom for their mental health, for their educational wellness. And I also am concerned that with the spread of the coronavirus amongst children, you know, that won't be possible, and that affects their learning, that affects their wellness. And so I want to go in prepared the school year so that children can have the best possible school year, so families can be safe, that children don't bring COVID-19 to their families. And I just, I know that other school districts have made bold moves and have been successful, and I know that it is possible, and so I just ask you to take children and their families into consideration the school year. And thanks for all you have done this past year. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for all of you sharing your concerns. The superintendent is going to report a little bit later in our agenda, and if you don't want to stick around and listen to the conversation, you can tune in hopefully on, what, Spectrum? TV? Oh, the Spectrum issue's still a problem. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda, review and discuss, JW Carver Middle School Fire. Dr. Kincanon.
All right. I'm going to, I think I need to take my mask off so I don't sound muted a little bit. I want to visit a little bit about the fire that happened at Carver Middle School on July 27th. And then the next item on the agenda will be an opportunity for the board to learn more about our insurance, and we have representatives here from Tasby's Risk Management Fund to help with that item. I've outlined the actions that have been taken. Of course, the fire was devastating to Carver Middle School and to Waco ISD. It's been a very challenging time since that happened on July 27th. So just a few things that we've done to move forward since the fire in preparation for the school year that begins on August 23rd, just over a week away, is to make some decisions about where the students will attend school. So Dr. McDurham and myself and some of our administrators, looking at financial pieces, looking at accountability pieces, and talking about what's best for our students, made the decision to move Carver to Indian Springs Middle School with each campus retaining their campus code and their name, the name of the school. And we felt like that would be best for consistency and really just to ease into this new school year for our students and maintain that identity. However, we did talk about, and Dr. McDurham is here this evening on the front row, so I'm looking at her, we did talk about some opportunities for co-teaching with our teachers and ways that we could efficiently use space at Indian Springs. Then we met with our architects from O'Connell Robertson and looked at the library specifically because the library space at Indian Springs is really large. There's opportunity to put a couple of classrooms in that space, and the librarian is very gracious. The issue there is that it's a sunken library with no walls around it, so it opens up to all the hallways. But we've come up with a solution, working through our architects, and that is well underway to create a couple of classrooms there. We also looked at some branding options, and we've come up with some banners to order to help brand the school for both campuses so that all of the students feel validated and welcomed in the building, and we appreciate O'Connell Robertson for helping us with that. They also did some evaluation of the cafeteria to make sure that we could feed students there, and I asked them to look at an awning over the patio courtyard outside of the cafeteria so that we would have a structure for when we have light rain or for a hot day like we're having right now. And so they're, it's still in process on evaluation, evaluating that structure, and I think we have a contractor involved with that. So some really good work in progress there. I also asked our staff to order two new double portables, so we would have four additional classrooms with that, and those have been ordered, and they will be in place for the first day of school. And Israel is nodding his head on that. So thank you for, to our maintenance and facilities team for making that happen. Transformation Waco conducted a parent meeting on August the 5th to just communicate with parents about logistics for the beginning of the school year and how things will work. And I think I saw on social media, you have some more meetings planned with parents. And then we've also worked closely with the Waco Fire Department, thank you, Mr. Guillory, and with the Texas Association of School Boards Risk Management Fund regarding the investigation and the insurance claim. And so with that, I will offer you an opportunity, Dr. McDurham, to say anything you'd like to say to the board at this time? Thank you very much. Anything to add? Yeah. I hear the staff's doing a really amazing job of really working together to take care of the kids, and so we appreciate that. And obviously, Transformation Waco operates the campus on a day-to-day basis. Waco ISD is responsible for the facility, so we've been working together closely.
Next is Tasby Risk Management Fund, Mr. Winslow.
And Tony Snyder.
And Tony Snyder.
My question is just, you might talk about it later on because I could wait, but what's the plan of safety? Because I know I went to the meeting that Transformation Waco had, and we're talking about having 30 kids in one classroom with two teachers. So what's going to be like the COVID safety guidelines for those situations at Indian Springs?
Sorry, Mr. Winslow. We apologize.
First, I want to clarify that it's not the plan to put 30 kids in every classroom, but there may be an instance where that's the maximum with two teachers. We will be following all of the guidelines that the district is recommending for masking and all other safety guidelines.
Is there anything else? No? Okay. Okay, welcome. Thank you.
Evening trustees and Dr. Kincanon. I'm Troy Winslow. I'm the Director of Auto Liability and Property Claims at the Texas Association of School Boards, and we are the administrators of the Texas Association of School Boards Risk Management Fund, and so we provide the coverage for auto liability, property, and workers' compensation to the district. With me tonight is David Snyder. He's one of our property adjusters. David is handling the claim for the fire loss at Carver, and ironically, David's gotten to know the staff pretty well because he's also handling a claim from a hail loss in April of last year, as well as the claim from the freeze loss of February's. He and Mr. Israel, Mr. Villanueva, and Ms. Davis have become fast friends. So we were asked to come tonight and provide an overview of the district's insurance coverage relative to the fire, as well as what's happening with the claim. So I'll start kind of with a coverage overview and let David talk to you about what's going on with the claim. Before I get into the specifics of the coverage, I do like to, whenever I get a chance, to get in front of the board, give just a brief explanation about the Risk Management Fund because it's a little bit different. So the Risk Management Fund is a self-insured risk pool, which is different than like a for-profit insurance company. So it's made up of school districts across Texas and other educational entities that have agreed to pool their money to address their risk exposures. So on its face, it looks a lot like insurance, and the mechanics of how it functions, a lot of the language that we use, a lot of the coverage is pretty similar to insurance, but it is fundamentally different being a self-insured risk pool. And one of the ways where that difference really comes into play when you have a loss is kind of our claims philosophy is myself, David, our team understands that with the risk pool, it's contributions by Waco and all of the other school districts that contribute that make up the pool of money that we are charged with using to address a loss situation. So we're very cognizant of the obligations that we have to make sure that we appropriately handle the claim with our fiduciary duties, and we do it consistent with our coverage agreement, but looking to give the most benefit possible to our members when we're looking at the coverage that's available. Okay, so let's talk about coverage in general. So Waco ISD, with their property coverage, has what we call blanket coverage, which just means we don't assign a specific value to a building. So instead of getting into the specifics of blanket coverage, what that means for this claim is there is no set dollar limit to the coverage for the loss to the claim. We'll figure out what that looks like and address it from there, but you're not capped at a certain amount for the loss. So that's the first thing to keep in mind. The second important thing is there's really two ways when there's a loss to property to handle that loss or to look at things that are damaged. Number one is, can whatever was damaged be fixed, or does it need to be replaced? And if it can be fixed, it's pretty easy. You figure out what it'll take to fix it and go forward. When you have property that's destroyed, what we do is you look at what does it cost to replace the property? Because your coverage provides for replacement cost coverage. And so really kind of an easy way to think of that is if you look at, let's say, flooring, for example, and carpeting. If carpeting is destroyed, then the coverage will pay to replace it, even though the carpet might be, let's say, five years old and is worth less than what it was when it was originally purchased, the coverage still provides for full replacement cost. So whatever it takes to replace the carpet of like kind and quality, then that's what the coverage will pay for. If there was an opportunity where a member of the district decided that they wanted to upgrade, then that's a different scenario because, like I mentioned, the coverage pays for like kind and quality. Now, the only time where that might be different is if there's a particular building code in Texas, maybe a local building code or an ordinance that requires an upgrade, then the coverage does provide for additional consideration for that upgrade when it's required. In this situation, coverage is available for up to $1 million to address those upgrades. We'll know more as the process unfolds and what it looks like as far as what needs to be replaced and assessing that, as to whether or not there are upgrades that the code might require to do, and so we'll take that into consideration as well. And kind of the final thing that'll come into play, and I think Dr. Kincanon has already alluded to it, is there is coverage for what's called extra expense, and this is above and beyond any property that's damaged. And this is for any expenses that are needed for the district to continue operations. And really, Dr. Kincanon mentioned a couple prominent ones. Number one, portables. You need those to continue to house the students at a different location. That's part of that extra expense coverage. Some modifications may need to be made at Indian Springs to accommodate the students there. That's part of extra expense. So anything that's needed to continue the operations normally, we will consider as part of extra expense. There is a limit of $500,000 for that coverage, so we want to keep that in mind. David's aware of that. The folks that he's working with are aware of that, and so we'll be mindful to watch as the expenses come and try and prioritize and make sure that things are addressed that are most appropriate for that coverage. Okay, so those are kind of the highlights of the coverage itself. And before I ask David to talk to you about kind of what's going on with the claim and the specifics, do you guys have any questions about anything that I've talked about? Okay, great.
Thank you, Dr. Kincanon and the board for allowing us to come and speak to you today. I will be handling the claim with your team and working with them to move it forward. One of the things we do in the claim process is we have a workflow. When there's a fire like this, we at first send in a fire and origin investigator to try to determine what caused the fire. And when he has completed his investigation and is allowed, we're allowed to send in a estimator, and we have hired a building consultant to come in with their team, look through the damages, take measurements, and write an estimate. They have completed that estimate, I'm sorry, they've completed their investigation but not given us a written estimate on what the total cost is going to be yet. We expect that probably within the next two weeks. To go along with that, that addresses the structure. Now we have to address the contents. We've also brought in a specialist that's been on the ground for two days, working with Alex and Israel to put together all the damaged materials that they can find in this fire. And we've also gotten the estimates, a line item estimates from the teachers on the things that they can remember that were in the classrooms before they were burnt to the ground, so we don't miss anything. And we realized with contents, you're going to put down everything you could think about, and then two weeks later, you're going to say, hey, I forgot something. And we're aware of that, and we'll add that to the list. Okay? And the next part of the puzzle is going to be the mitigation side, and Waco ISD has hired cottons to start the mitigation, and we will work with them to make sure they investigate, clean everything that needs to be cleaned. Once we get that estimate, we'll turn that over to y'all and move forward. But we do have a workflow, and it works pretty smoothly.
Anybody have questions? Mr. Davis?
This complete process will be over in two weeks.
We hope to have the report back in two more weeks.
Are there questions?
We don't have any kind of like preliminary numbers that we can go off of right now.
We do have a verbal. We do have a verbal. Please don't hold it to, hold us accountable for it. Right now, the verbal was 15.8 million with 1.2 in code upgrades. But please do not hold us to that number.
We're hoping it's more.
And it may be, it may be.
Thank you.
At all?
Yes, sir. Thank y'all so much for coming. Thank you for your help and, yeah, good work. Thank you.
We will be in touch daily.
I'm sure. Well, we have several items here to discuss regarding Carver. You know, the outpouring of support from our community has been phenomenal. And I don't know if, not quite on the agenda, but if there's anything, Dr. McDermott, in particular, you'd like for our community to donate or give, or maybe, I've seen so many requests for help, I'm not sure if it's going the right places or you're getting the right things that we need for our staff. But I'll give you a little moment to stick in between just these dry business items.
We have had an overwhelming outpour of support. Some specific organizations, T-Mobile has gone in and spent $25,000 clearing out several of the teachers' wish lists that were on Amazon. We also have, Magnolia is doing, the Magnolia Foundation is currently doing a campaign, and they're shooting for $15,000 to complete that. We've had several organizations, you know, offer up and send checks from three to $5,000, $1,000. And today, we packed gift cards for the teachers and staff. And we had close to $5,000 in gift cards that we packed up for individual teachers, and we'll be giving those to them tomorrow. There are still items on the Amazon wishlist that we're hoping to continue to fill. And so that's an easy place for people to plug in if they would like to do that, and they just have to go to the Transformation Waco website. My understanding is there's also a school supply drive being organized by some community members. And when we have that clearly defined, we'll put that on our website as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Sykes?
Dr. McDermott, with all the support that is coming forward now and will be coming forward, it'd be great if we could, I know you'll do it, extend the list so we could recognize those entities at the appropriate time for their support that's very welcome at this point, so.
Thank you for mentioning that. We have a very thorough accounting of everything that's coming in, and we're working with someone to do a video.
Oh, good.
A thank you video. So soon as we have that, we'll share it all with you.
Very good, very nice. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, item seven. Consider discuss, take appropriate action regarding the designation of an emergency for GW Carver Middle School. Authorize the superintendent to procure goods and services per Texas Education Code 44.031H and approve budget amendment in advance of pending insurance recovery. Ms. Davis?
Yes, I think the title of the agenda either says it all. Basically, what we're asking for tonight is for you to authorize Dr. Kincaid to go ahead and approve purchases. Normally, any purchase over $50,000, we would need to take to the board for prior approval. But with portables and some of the mitigation that we're having to do, those costs are running over $50,000. So we're asking you, under this section, to go ahead and approve Dr. Kincaid to make those purchases and the ones that are necessary to, as I said, mitigate, prevent, restore, and repair the damages of the old campus, as well as get the portables and dividers and supplies, materials for the new campus to continue education. There is also an amendment as part of this to get us some funds pending, of course, the insurance reimbursement, but to get us some funds out there to start with those purchases. And so we're asking for you to authorize Dr. Kincaid to approve the amendment. The amendment's for $942,000. $952,000, you're right.
All right, I will entertain a motion. Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Second, thank you. Ms. Cordoway, any further discussion or questions for Ms. Davis? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Next is to consider discuss and take appropriate action on a resolution authorizing the reimbursement of certain expenditures incurred in the replacement of GW Carver Middle School from future tax-exempt debt obligations. This is similar to the resolution that we passed for Waco High School earlier in this school year. Ms. Davis?
Yes, this is similar to the resolution we did pass for Waco High School so we could start design work and in case there was land purchase or any of that type of thing. That was done, I think, February or March timeframe for $5 million. This is asking for a reimbursing resolution for Carver. So again, we'll start to design work because we're accelerating the construction of that campus.
All right, any questions for Ms. Davis? Mr. Dupuy?
Not, we won't need to once we've had the bond election done.
This is only necessary before the bond so that you have the authority to reimburse yourself for expenses incurred at the time of design, which I think the intent to replace Carver is very clear. We intend to replace Carver.
Absolutely.
And we want to get on with it as soon as possible. And of course, we need the bond to do that, but with this resolution, we'd be able to reimburse ourselves expenses before the bond passes.
From the process.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So if the bond doesn't passes, pass, what happens if we've?
Basically, the general fund fronts the costs on all of these design fees that we've started and for both Waco High and for Carver. So if the bond election does not pass, I mean, it might go back to the voters a second time, but if it does not eventually pass, then the general fund would have to foot the cost.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation and approve the resolution authorizing the reimbursement of costs that have been or will be in paid subsequent to the date that is 60 days prior to August 12. This is a long one, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Cordoway. Second? Thank you, Mr. Fadanya. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. First steps to getting this, our school rebuilt. Next is a next step in the process to consider a recommendation regarding the project delivery method for the replacement of GW Carver Middle School and authorize the superintendent to issue a request for proposals and/or qualifications and bring a recommendation rankings back to the board for approval. This is necessary anytime we consider a construction project of, well, of this magnitude for sure. So Dr. Kincaid?
Sure, thank you. You all just approved, gave us the authority to design the school. This item allows us to move forward with hiring a contractor, selecting a delivery method, and hiring a contractor to rebuild the school. So we have reviewed construction delivery methods with you recently as we worked through this similar process for Waco High School. So we're recommending the construction manager at-risk process for Carver Middle School. It's the same process we're using for Waco High School. I've included Jared's presentation from the board meeting where you made the decision regarding Waco High School, and Jared is here if you have any questions about the delivery method itself. Otherwise, I recommend that you all approve the CMAR process for the construction delivery method for Carver Middle School.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure. Mr. Gilley? Mr. Sersinger?
So since we do have, you know, Carver did burn, there's a lot more risk there as far as disposal of hazardous materials, lead, age of the school, and things like that. That wasn't in the original plan. Have y'all looked at that? And how are you going to dispose of those, that hazardous waste out of the community?
Sure, so on all the campuses, actually with the age of the campuses, there is, we always look at hazardous materials like asbestos, lead, and the disposal through that. So the district has been keeping those records on file with the fire, the tragedy that occurred there. We will have to look at it a little bit differently here at this point. We haven't jumped into that yet, but it is something that we will look at. Thank you.
I have a question. So how does this affect the timeline now that we, of the different schools? I know Tennyson and Carver both were the same price, but Tennyson was going to be a little bit more expensive because of the timeline? So what changes have happened since the fire at Carver is my question?
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Sersinger to hold that thought or to keep thinking about his answer. And let's get this item. I need a motion in a second to approve the recommendation regarding the delivery method. And then we'll, because I think we're going to spend quite a bit of time talking about that exact issue in a bit. So anybody willing to help us move along with the motion regarding the delivery method?
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Cordoway. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next, superintendent's recommendation for a November 2021 bond election. Dr. Kincaid? And?
We have several.
Mr. Sersinger, Mr. Trailer, and we have a community advisory member here.
Andre Chapa.
Andre Chapa? Oh, yeah.
There he is.
Very good, okay.
I'll get started first and before I have Jared and Andre present. But tonight, I'm recommending that the board take a significant step towards making sure that every student in our district has a safe, comfortable, and modern place to learn. When I became the superintendent here in September of 2019, I spent quite a bit of time visiting each one of our campuses, getting to know our employees. And those visits confirmed that we are blessed to have an incredible group of people who go to work each day committed to making a difference in the lives of our students. But one thing stood out to me, and to an embarrassing degree, the conditions of our school buildings are dramatically different from one place to another. Some students have comfortable, modern schools, while others attend old schools with leaky roofs, inadequate heating and cooling systems, and other problems. Many of our campuses with the most significant facilities needs were built in the 1950s and the 1960s. And it's not just that there will be tens of millions of dollars in maintenance costs for these schools over the next 10 to 15 years. It's also that education has changed since 1950s, since the 1950s and the 1960s. To get a clearer picture of the condition of our facilities, we contracted with Alpha Facility Solutions for a comprehensive district-wide facilities assessment. That assessment identified 21 buildings with significant or moderate needs in Waco ISD. To prioritize our needs and develop a long-range facilities plan to address them, in January, we convened a community advisory committee made up of 60 parents, educators, and other community members. And after a series of meetings in May, the committee recommended four projects prioritized as follows. One was to replace Waco High School with a new building in the same location. The second was to replace GW Carver Middle School with a new building in the same location, large enough to also serve students zoned to attend Indian Spring Middle. Next was to replace Tennyson Middle School with a new building in the same location. And finally, to replace Kendrick Elementary with a new building in the same location, large enough to serve many of the students zoned to attend Alta Vista Elementary, and then renovate South Waco Elementary to serve the remaining students zoned to Alta Vista Elementary. Tonight, I'm recommending that the board call a bond election for November 2, 2021 to seek voter approval to issue $355 million of bonds to fund the projects prioritized by the community advisory committee. If approved by voters, these projects will address nearly all the facility needs that were identified at the secondary level, bringing all of our comprehensive middle and high schools up to modern building codes and educational standards. While these projects will not address all of our elementary facility needs, they would be a significant first step in that direction. I've asked several people tonight to help walk us through how we got here, as well as the details of the projects that I'm recommending and their costs. So, but first, we're going to start with Andre Chapa, who is a member of the community advisory committee and a parent of Waco ISD students. He has agreed to share his thoughts on the process. Andre?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kincaid, school board. I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity to be here to share. A little bit about myself, as you heard, my name's Andre Chapa. Born and raised here in Waco, Texas, grew up on the South Waco side of town. I went to Saul Ross Elementary, to University Middle School, and went to the old university, but still once a Trojan, I was a Trojan. So just want to thank y'all for allowing me to be here. I got, me and my wife and I have four children. My oldest just graduated 2019 from Waco High. My daughter's a junior at Waco High right now. And then I have two little boys that are at Laker and Montessori. They're on their way to Waco High. And so just me being born and raised here, just having the opportunity to be on the board for Waco ISD to see, be part of the change, in other words. We're going in a good direction. I know we went through this year that we went through, but it's going in the right direction. I'm just thankful, if you know my story, you know how thankful I am just to stand here in front of y'all, to speak to y'all. And so as I get started, as Dr. Kincaid noted, I was one of about 60 parents, educators, and community members who met eight times between early January and May to study Waco ISD's facility needs. We understand that the district's architects will be reviewing the technical details of the committee's recommendations. We want to share with you how the committee came to make those recommendations. We toured campuses, reviewed comprehensive district-wide facilities assessment, heard from the district's demographic and financial advisor. We looked at attendance, boundaries, and transportation, and received extensive information from the district's architects. Some of the key takeaways from that process over those few months mainly had a lot to do with the committee, being made up of teachers, parents, alumni, business. It's, a lot of the input was just from their personal experience of being on campus, whether it was dropping their kids off, dropping their grandkids off, and actually going back to some of the campuses that they attended, speaking of Waco High. You know, some of the conditions, as we've known of our buildings, are dramatically different. Some students have comfortable, modern schools, while others have old schools with leaky roofs, inadequate heating and cooling systems, and a lot of other problems. But for me, my, one of the things I enjoyed was the opportunity to tour the campus. You know, as a parent, you know, you, and you get so much of the campus because you're not allowed inside. But given that opportunity to sign up and pick which campus you wanted to tour, whether it was the middle school, elementary, or high school, for me, I took the opportunity for the high schools, meaning that Laker and Montessori's not on the list, so, hey, my kids are going to be going to Waco High, so I'll say, hey, let's look at the high schools. And so for me, getting a firsthand look of university high school compared to Waco High School, and we all know it's dramatically different, you can just drive by and already tell. And so being able to walk through those halls and seeing at university a wider hallway providing, going to Waco High to where everything was kind of more closed in and just felt a little bit more cluttered. And so just the difference and the distinguishing of those two campuses, you know, opened my eyes to see, hey, even behind the scenes of the automotive department of, I didn't even know that was in there. automotive department of, I didn't even know that was in there. And I was like, man, can I come get my oil change for free? Or, you know, it's like, you know, I didn't even know that was there. And so, just having that opportunity to tour those campuses, and then even in the band hall when my daughter was in band, going to a Copper's Cove, or going to, it's like, seeing their setup. And then, you know, sports is my thing. So, going to campuses where it's walks a hatchet, whether it was Belton, and then seeing the facilities that our kids go to and participate in, and then have to come back. And it's like, man, I would be in the stands or cheering the kids on, but hearing as they're leaving, it's like, man, look at this place. And this is, you know, so, having the opportunity to be able to accommodate not only the needs for our community, but for our kids to have a better place to learn and grow. So, we want our children's schools to be great places to learn and grow. But more than that, we want every child in our community to have a safe and welcoming learning environment. The neighborhood that a child grows up in cannot mean that he or she will have fewer opportunities than another child living across town or in a different school district. As we advance in education and in technology, some of our older school buildings won't allow our kids to be engaged, equipped, and empowered to bring out the greatness inside them. With that in mind, the committee recommended the following projects prioritized in this following order. To replace Waco High with a new building in the same location. Replace GW Carver with a new building in the same location, large enough to also serve the students zoned to attend Indian Spring Middle. Replace Tennyson Middle School with a new building in the same location. And replace Kendrick Elementary with a new building in the same location, large enough to serve many of the students zoned to attend Alta Vista Elementary. And renovate South Waco Elementary to serve the remaining students zoned to that attend Alta Vista Elementary. Now, with these recommended, these recommendations would address nearly all the facilities needs that were identified at the secondary level. If implemented, all of our comprehensive middle school and high school schools will meet modern building codes and educational standards. One financial consideration for the committee was the projected cost of maintenance for Waco High, GW Carver Middle, Indian Spring Middle, Alta Vista Elementary, and Kendrick Elementary. We can pay about $184 million to maintain them as they are through, to maintain them through 2034. But alternatively, we can combine a couple of the schools and replace them with new, larger buildings for twice that amount. As a committee, we also wrestled with the cost of these projects. At the time, we were discussing the total cost of $376.1 million. And ultimately, most of the committee felt that the community will support that. We understand that the administration and the architects have found ways to reduce the projected cost since then, and that Dr. Kincaid has recommended asking voters for approval to issue $355 million in bonds. With the lower tax impact, we hope that there would be even more support for these recommendations. As of this feeling of, I just want to say thank y'all again for allowing me to be here. One, I just want to thank the whole school district, from the facilities to the janitors that take care of our schools, to keep our cafeterias and restrooms clean, to the teachers that stuck it out and made it happen, and to every of the community involved to allow our kids to continue to be educated. And as we look forward to move to this, toward this new growth, just, we are Waco, and we are Waco ISD. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Chapa, thank you so much for being here. And I don't know how many of members of the board had the pleasure to be in your Zoom group sessions, but I did a couple of times. Like, this guy rocks. Yeah. So, thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
All right. Next is Jared Sturzinger from Otona Watson Architects. And I've asked you to review, and Doug, to review what we've included in the projects and then the timeline.
And now, don't forget Mr. Davis's question. The timeline.
Mr. Davis will remind you, so please don't.
There's a little bit of money that we'll save. That's a good choice. So, well, members of the board, thank you for having us here. Dr. Kincaid, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Doug and I have been on this journey since the beginning, last several years, so working through the facility master plan process, now on Waco High School process. So, deep in the details, really appreciate the passion and thoughtfulness. And so, I'm going to actually repeat a lot of the same themes that you already heard this evening as we move through the facility master plan process, just in response. If we want to jump to the next presentation, we can talk about construction manager at risk if you want. All right. So, the facilities master plan process, as we get through this, is really, was a great journey of really about discussion about the opportunities, about the constraints that we're finding within the process, and ultimately, really listening to the community committee, the feedback that they had within the projects, within the design, what's important to them, and how do we continue moving forward. But ultimately, knowing that we wanted to focus on Waco, that it's the heart of Texas. We wanted to focus on the students, creating that right opportunity for them, as well as the teachers. But there were a lot of considerations, a lot of elements, that really started well over a year ago, as Dr. Kincaid, with School Dude and with the facility condition assessment, really stepped through the facility assessment. We went through an educational suitability, educational vision, and then demographics and capacity. And we'll touch base on each one of those, but ultimately, how those are the constraints and sometimes the opportunities to be able to move forward. As we looked at the facility condition assessment, and this was really about the bricks and mortar of the school. How are they continuing to be supported? And I'll point out here, the main theme there was is that there's a significant immediate need to be able to continue to maintain and operate the schools. And then, that need continues to grow over time. So, there are things that are great, that are going in place in terms of replacing roofs, maintaining HVAC equipment. We've helped support some of those projects over the last year or two. But again, those systems are going to come due here in about 10 years, and you'll see then the red represents that larger growing need. As we looked and started to contrast the facility condition assessment with educational suitability, started seeing that ranking of the campuses that Dr. Kincaid mentioned. So, you'll see a lot of the themes here, kind of the more challenging schools in the bottom left, the greater opportunities in the top right, you know, contrasting. So, you see the three middle schools that we'll talk about tonight, Carver, Indian Spring, Tennyson, Waco High School. And then, on the top right, you see the great facilities that Waco put in place, you know, about 10 years ago with University, Bell's Hill, and JH Heinz, and just the focus that the district has had. We additionally hit demographics, and this was a report put together by Templeton Demographics that they're continuing to update. There was a recent update here. And ultimately, the idea that, you know, on average, the district's sitting at about 14,000 students, 14,500, almost 15,000 students, and that's going to remain constant here over the next 10 years. And so, then the question became is, how do we support that? And that got into the actual capacity and the actual enrollment of school, and brought about this theme about rightsizing some of the facilities for the district, of making sure that we can support the students throughout the district and the campus. And then, the theme that, you know, of course, I believe in heartily as an architect, but the learning environment. And you heard those themes about when we look at comparison of other facilities, about even the contrast within the district, is what we call 21st century learning environments. So, here, just a couple snippets of the images of what the facilities can be, how they can support students, not only in the core educational areas, but really in the athletics and the fine arts. And how do we continue to elevate those opportunities from kindergarten through 12th grade? So, that really became the foundation of the understanding of the district and how we move forward. That ultimately developed with the feedback from the district into the guiding, from the community into the guiding principles, really focusing in on the district's vision for academic excellence, about creating equity across the district in terms of facilities, but also in terms of programs as well. You heard about automotive tech, making sure that that's offered for everyone. And then, as well, just knowing that, man, there's a lot of facilities on the ground. How do we maintain that money that's been invested in those facilities moving forward? So, ultimately, this resulted in the projects. You've heard about the projects. I'll jump in a little bit deeper onto some of these. So, the replacement, Waco High School campus, right now, we're targeting a 370,000 square foot facility that'll support 2,150 students. The cost of that is $157 million. We're currently in the planning phase. And ultimately, we'll look to move into construction this coming summer and work through about a three, three and a half year process with interim milestones, as we talked about last time, coming in year two and year three, to be able to get students in the new building and moving forward. As we move to the middle school campuses, that's Carver and Indian Spring, and then as well, Tennyson. Here, we would be looking at building two new schools that are 184,000 square feet, support 1,060 students, and they're roughly $73 and $77 million each. And I'll pause here and just identify that it is something that we looked at through the process of that weighing out between new, existing facilities and new facilities in terms of cost. And so, we tried to find that balance. We tested out multiple things on our side to make sure that it's right cost. And ultimately, the cost to renovate, to bring it up to a little bit of par, started equating or being above the cost of a new facility. So, that was a really key decision point as we move forward through that design process at the middle schools, as well as the high schools. And then, at the elementary school, and I'll hit a little bit more on that theme here in a second, but ultimately, looked at that strategy, is that there is a large need at the elementary school level, as well, when you pair it with the middle school and the high school. And ultimately, identified the strategy of, you know, addressing the schools with the highest need, making sure that we're supporting staff and addressing operational efficiencies, and ultimately, aligning campuses with that 10-year need, which really then allowed us to focus in on what is that highest and immediate priority. And ultimately, was finding a group of schools that were located together. So, you see at the top right of the map, Kendrick, Alta Vista, and South Waco. There is the need there. And ultimately, in terms of capacity of drawing those together, that that starts to support the vision of creating the two schools moving forward. In this case as well, where Kendrick, we saw that opportunity and the need to be able to provide a new facility. South Waco found the opportunity to go through the renovation. So, looking at improving library, improving cafeteria to be able to address the student population, given overall finish, upgrade in finishes, as well as hitting the facility condition assessment elements within that project. So, that brings out that theme of maximizing the existing facilities for Waco ISD. So, ultimately, this did lead to the facilities master plan. You received that document a few months back that really outlined this entire process as we went through the committee, the backup information, identified those immediate priorities, as well as cast that vision 10 to 15 years down the road to make sure that this step is the right step in moving towards that future vision within the district. So, then we hit the, quite literally, the million dollar question in terms of how we move forward here in the bond program. And so, last month, we presented the bond strategy. There were two options, A and B. We're bringing you here tonight, option A2. So, it is a variation on that scheme. And then fundamentally, with the tragedy that has happened at Carver Middle School, it's also provide the opportunity to move things, to expedite things. So, the main difference between this, the schedule that you see here tonight and the previous night, is both middle schools have moved up one year. So, where it was at first, Carver and Indian Spring, that would start design next year, that's now, we're proposing to identify that. You'll see pretty immediately in concept. We would start design in September, and we would target a March timeframe to start bringing back packages, maybe even a little bit earlier in that, trying to get ahead of the project, ultimately with the target of trying to open the doors in '23. So, it's an entire year sooner. So, there would be a new Carver Middle School in about two years from now. We'll be hit the ribbon cutting. So, pretty quick happening here. And the construction manager at risk, thank you for passing that, will help us achieve that goal. So, what does that do? So, we have the updated schedule. The other three projects remain the same within the timeframe, but you'll see then that there's a decreased number of dollars. So, we were at $376 million is what we presented last time. This time, we're showing $367.1 million, which represents the total project cost, with the $12 million delta being the insurance. And I know that Dr. Kincaid, I believe, is going to talk through that here in a second. Ultimately, you know, working through, that carries the vision from the efforts over the last year of really understanding where the district's at, engaging the community and the stakeholders to help create that longer-term vision, identifying that right first step, which ultimately is the bond program put in front of you here tonight. So, lots of information, lots of things happening at a time.
Good job. Good job covering about two years' worth of work. Yeah, and seven minutes or something. Very good. Dr. Kincaid, is that, are you?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify the $355 million because we had been at $376.1 million even at the last meeting. But with the fire at Carver Middle School, we're factoring in a $12 million deduction waiting. We don't have a final number. So, we're going to hedge a little low on that to make sure that we can cover the cost of rebuilding this school. And then, with the new phasing and moving that timeline up, we've saved some inflationary costs. So, that's how we got to the $355 million. And just wanted to make sure you all understood that.
Okay. And next, anybody have any question? Well, he's not going anywhere.
No, next, okay, thank you.
Dusty Trailer.
Dusty is here to visit with us about the tax rate and the impact for our voters.
Welcome again, Dusty. Thank you for coming back.
Good evening, everyone.
We've worked on our numbers. So, have you worked on yours?
We have. We have worked on our numbers in conjunction.
And interest rates.
Of course. I brought my crystal ball. Again, for the record, Dusty Trailer with RBC Capital Markets. We have the honor and privilege of representing Waco ISD as financial advisor. And to your point, having had the opportunity to visit with each of you previously, and given the new revised numbers, we have revised our numbers. The presentation material that I have for you this evening is, you'll recognize many of these slides. And I'll try, I'll try my best to flip through these as quick as possible. All right, doing it. So, the first slide here on the screen is just a quick snapshot of Waco ISD's outstanding bond portfolio. We've discussed this several times. The district has four separate bond issues presently outstanding in the total principal amount of $141,440,000. One of those issues is the most recent refinancing that was conducted earlier this year that resulted in significant debt service savings for the district and local taxpayers. You'll notice the graphs down below. Those depict the district's annual debt service payments on those outstanding bonds. And one of the things that factors in mightily here for the district's bonding capacity is you'll notice that the debt service represented in fiscal year '21 and '22 then falls off in 2023 by approximately $4 million. Well, it's in that 2023 fiscal year that you would actually begin paying debt service on any new bond here. So, that ties in very nicely to contribute to the bond capacity that we have.
It seems counterintuitive to me that you'd retire a bunch of debt in 2023, and then your interest expense goes way up in '24 and '25. What, what happens there?
I'll have to, I'll have to look at that. I'll get, I'll get you the information on that. I see what you're talking about, the two little graphs there, or the two little bars there, '24 and '25.
I heard a lot of debt, it would, your.
Yeah. I'll, I'll take a look at that. They ought to be, they ought to be raised up a little bit more. There may be something there, I think, that is in line with the 2021 refunding bonds. We may have had to put an instrument in place in '24 and '25 with a refunding bond called a CAB. But that's all that's, that may be all that's there. That may be the reason. Okay.
Balloon.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to know.
Sure. We'll look it up. I believe that's the case. The next, the next slide, we've discussed many of your neighboring districts, and just how Waco ISD fits in very, very nicely in terms of the tax rate of many of your peer districts here locally. You are, I would say, comfortably towards the low end. This was previously, in this current fiscal year that you are in, tax rate. I believe that your tax rate here in the upcoming fiscal year is due to actually drop just a little bit. I don't want to steal any of Ms. Davis's thunder upcoming, but I think that the tax rate here for Waco ISD is due to go down just a little bit more in this upcoming fiscal year. I cannot speak to the tax rates of those other districts for the upcoming year. But again, you guys have been good stewards with your tax rates. This slide here, we've discussed plenty of times. It just goes to show the refinancing savings that this administration and board have taken to refinance outstanding bonds and produce debt service savings for the local citizens, anytime that those opportunities have presented themselves. Going back to 2013, the district has refinanced a total of five separate times, producing debt service savings of over $41 million. And that, again, helps to translate to interest savings for the taxpayers and capacity for this. this potential bond issue, bond election. Page number five, we're looking at just the old historical tax base. You see the, the term TAV up there. That stands for taxable assessed valuation. That's the tax base of Waco ISD. Over the course of the past 10 years, that tax base, not including the upcoming year, has grown at a rate of about 5.8, almost 6% per year. Additionally, I will point out the historical tax rate of Waco ISD. One of the things on here you can see, if we, if we look on this chart, we only go back to the 2012 fiscal year, the tax rate of the district peaked in 2018, '19 at a 1.41 cent rate. You are well below that now and will be falling a little bit more. And even with the additional pennies needed for, on the INS side for this bond, you should remain below that 2018 peak tax rate. The next slide here, we just talk a little bit about our assumptions for how we derived our bond impact and our bond capacity. One thing to note, for this particular calculation, we assume the district's INS tax rate of .2202. That is a slight decrease from where you levied in the 2021 fiscal year. So we're already starting our impact number from a little bit lower spot. We're assuming that the district's 2022 certified taxable assessed valuation is approximately $6.69 billion. That was a slight increase. Remember, when we discussed this in the spring and early summer, we were holding that value steady. The appraisal district came back with a slight increase over last year. We were able to incorporate that into our numbers. And then we assumed a tax base growth of 5%. We assumed levies coming back from frozen of about $960,000 and then a tax collection rate of 98%. Now, this, this assumes our interest rates here. I want to, I want to point that out. We are actually using a little bit lower interest rate assumption than, than what's presented on this slide. Interest rates have come down just a little bit here over the course of the past six to eight weeks. We have incorporated that into our model. So we're using a slightly less conservative interest rate impact for the first sale. So I think that also helps us as it relates to our bonding capacity. Now, I've said all that to say this, our estimated impact for a $355 million bond election is an INS tax rate increase of approximately 10.01 cents. That is down by approximate, a little over two cents from the scenarios that we ran back in July on the $376 million issue. But remember, we're also pulling off about .4 cents as well. So we're actually about 2.5 cents in total lower than where we were back in July. So again, I think this is improving. And then I've got the other scenarios here. I've got the 311 million scenario, the $234 million scenario, and then the $159 million scenario assumes no INS tax rate increases, our capacity without moving it at all. And I think, I know myself and, and most of us, when we consider, you know, we talk about pennies, we talk about a 10 cent increase. Well, I pay my bills in dollars and the rest of us do as well. The chart before you looks at how this increase would impact the average homeowner within Waco ISD. What we assumed and have is that the average homeowner at Waco ISD has a taxable value of approximately $117,000. And that's after you apply the $25,000 homestead exemption, so a market value of between $140,000 and $145,000. The $355 million bond program would have an impact on that homeowner of approximately $117.62 per year. But then, you know, again, like most folks, paying our bills on a monthly basis, that is an impact of less than $10 per month, an impact of $9.80 per month for that bond program. I'm not going to really roll through the full blown scenario at the, at the back of the page, or the back of the presentation, that spreadsheet, but we'll be happy to answer any questions. One thing I will point out is we are assuming the bond program, the $355 million bond program, gets split up into two issues, approximately issuance of approximately 2/3 of that amount in the coming year and then the remaining third in the year that follows.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Trailer?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Sure, I just would like to wrap it up by reminding you all of what we, the bigger picture of where we've come from with, starting with our mission statement to empower all and value all and our focus on equity and making sure that every kid gets what they need, no matter where they live in the community and no matter what zip code they live in. Also, just to, a reminder of the work that we've been doing with curriculum and instruction and supporting our students academically, which has been really important, the work we've done in technology to add thousands of devices for our students to increase instruction and ensure that our students can get information online. We're investing millions of dollars in federal stimulus funding, improving our libraries and retaining our teachers. And this is an important step that adds to all of the work that we're doing. The buildings where our students and our teachers learn and work are really important too. And they send a message about what we value and what we truly value, that we truly value all. So I just want to thank you for your consideration this evening of this item. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you have, either Jared or Dusty or myself.
Madam President.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Sykes.
In order to facilitate further discussion on this agenda item and in recognition of the superintendents and the administration's recommendations and the reports that we've had received from our community advisory committee and the support they've given this project over the extensive period of time that they've been looking at these numbers and the eight meetings that we've had, in recognition of, of those items culminating tonight, I move that we approve calling a bond election for November 2nd, 2021, seeking voter authorization to issue and sell bonds in the principal amount of $355 million to fund the construction of a new Waco High, a new GW Carver Middle, a new Tennyson Middle, and a new Kendrick Elementary, as well as the renovation of South Waco Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
Madam President, I just want to say, I definitely appreciate everybody's impact on this process. I was blessed to be a part of the long range planning facility committee before getting on the board. I will say that I am happy to hear that the tax impact was lessened due to the Carver situation, but yet and still, this will have a negative impact on a lot of citizens in the Waco ISD area. So where these numbers might look low for a lot of our families will not be able to afford them. So that's why I have asked for us to look at smaller bond packages. But I would just want to urge the board one more time for us to really consider the families that will be negatively affected, those that own their homes and those rent homes here in Waco by the tax implications they were putting. So I just, I just wanted to put that to the board one more time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. We have a motion on the floor and I'll entertain a second and then we can have further discussion.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Now, any further discussion?
I, Ms. Cordowig, so sorry. Yes, Madam President. I, I deeply understand Mr. Davis's concerns and I, you know, I do understand that, you know, Mr. Guillory had brought up the, the issue of our senior citizens being able to have a freeze, a tax ceiling. We had a presentation on that. So I'm encouraged by that information that we received. I also am encouraged that our, maybe our most vulnerable populations, this people who are maybe on subsidized housing, won't necessarily, won't be directly impacted by this. You know, I do think that, so I understand the concerns. What has been weighing heavy, several things have been weighing heavy on me, but what has been weighing heavy on my heart is knowing that education is more than just teaching kids, that there is, when kids are too hot or too cold, it's hard for them to concentrate. If kids have, I'll speak for my neighborhood. In my neighborhood, some of my neighbors, I've, homes are not quite suitable. And when I mean that, I mean there is, I, I'm not meaning to be disrespectful because this is not in any way, shape, or form meaning to disrespect people, but it, people are doing the best that they can, but when their homes are too hot or too cold, kids can't sleep at night, too loud, and then we expect those kids to come into buildings that are too hot, too cold, or leaking, it's, it's unacceptable in my book. We have to provide safe environments for our children. We have to provide, yeah, safe environments for our kids. And I think that the, this day and age has changed where we didn't have to put fences around playgrounds and yet now we do. There are security measures that new buildings afford that I think are needed. There are things that cannot be retrofitted in some of these old buildings that we, because of what Mr. Sersinger had mentioned and Mr. Guillory had mentioned, because of lead and asbestos, when we start digging into that, we start, it's not just a simple kind of retrofit, it's something that actually is going to cost a lot more. And so I guess what I'm saying is, when I heard from the community that they wanted our kids to be proud of the campuses that they go to, that there was a sense of pride that the community wanted to rally around our students so that they had this, for lack of better words, that's literally what we kept hearing in the community meeting, was we want our kids to know that they're valued and we want them to be proud of the schools that they go to. And, you know, I think for me personally, I think Carver was a wake-up call. We have a lot of buildings that are that age or older, Alta Vista built in 1910. And quite frankly, we're really lucky, blessed, fortunate that that fire did not spread to neighboring homes in that area. And while it is a chunk of change, I do think that it's something that me and my family are willing to pay, so that all of our kids in our community have facilities that are safe, that are air conditioned, that have all the amenities, that have 21st century learning environments, that you can get Wi-Fi in every part of the building where they don't have to walk through water to get to their class. These are things that are important to, for the students in, in this community. And I just, I feel like I'm rambling, but I think I just wanted to say that. I absolutely see where you're coming from, Mr. Davis, but I also, the other side of the coin, I think.
I definitely, backdoor is what Mr. Cordowig said. I'm one of the only board members that has actually worked at all of these facilities recently that we're, we're talking about. So I got to experience every day at work going into hallways that were flooding and seeing kids that have to bundle up because they're trying to focus on math, but it's 30 degrees in the building. So I definitely understand the, the reasoning for us needing the new facilities. My thing is, as a part of the committee, which several people have said today, we prioritize projects based on the need that the committee saw. So I was just wondering, could the board, could we look at those priorities to make it make sense for our taxpayers? That was the only, that was the only thing I wanted us to look at, take a deeper look into different packages, because we have four scenarios, one that has no tax impact, all the way up to one that has the greatest impact. So maybe we could just look at a different bond package, which I understand that might not be the way everybody looks at it. I definitely think, of course, Waco High, of course, Carver needs a new school. I worked at Carver in Tennessee. I understand, I, I walked the hallways daily, so I understand the need there. I just think that we made a priority, we made a list of priorities for a reason, so that if we did get into a situation where the tax impact would be too great, we could focus on those priorities. So that would kind of be my recommendation is that we would go with scenario two, where that's what I would like to see, to where it would be a less impact, or scenario three, you know, so to be a less impact on the taxpayers and we still get our students what they need in a better environment. Because they, they definitely don't deserve to walk into schools in the condition that they've been in previously. I just think we have to be strategic on how we move going forward. And also maintaining these buildings once we do, if we do pass a, a bond package and we build new schools, we don't need to be back here in 10 years having to build new schools all over again. So I think the maintenance that is done on these buildings is a very important factor too, because we have schools that were built at the same time that had dramatic differences because of the way it had been maintained and taken care of. So I think that's something we have to also mention when we build these new schools.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call a question?
Some, I'm gonna say this one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Guillory.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I was off, it's really along the same lines with Mr. Davis until, until Carver happened, you know, and we really do need, we need a new Carver Middle School. We can't possibly not have a, have a new Carver Middle School. So I think we today make the decision, put that out there and let the community decide what they want. We did, we did have the committee, we did put out a, a poll, and in both of those instances, the bond did pass. It was by a slight margin when we did the, when we did the poll and with the committee, it was, I think it was what, 89%? And so today, I'd say we, we let the community decide. And after the tax assessment presentation and looking at the, the interest rates and, and again, Carver being where it is now, I think we, we really do need to put this bond out there and let the community speak.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. I have to say that this has been heavy on my heart as well. I agree with Ms. Cordowig. And then having the tragedy at Carver really impressed upon me how our facilities are failing our kids. And it shouldn't matter where you live, what facility you have to go to school. I too taught in a facility that was inferior. I taught at University High School and I know what it's like to be cold in the winter. And I know as a teacher, when things are tough and, and we've been through something the last year, to be in a facility that just doesn't meet your basic needs is completely unacceptable. I am a trustee of this school district. It's not about me, the individual, and my personal opinion. I serve in the, in the facility as a trustee for our community of this district. And as a trustee, I can't sit by and tell our community that these facilities are acceptable and that they're anything that we can be proud of and that they properly serve our kids. It's not up to our kids to perform in order for us to give them what all the other kids have in our community. It's up to us to give them the tools they need to be successful. And I have to say that the fact that our administration has held the course on this bond program from the beginning in light of what we have been through in the last 16 months is. in light of what we have been through in the last 16 months is absolutely incredible. And I owe a great debt of gratitude to Dr. Kincanon, who came in here day one. Within the first week, she called me on the phone and she said, when's the last time you walked in Waco High School? I said, well, she said, unbelievable, unacceptable, we're going to do something about it. And, and that goes for all of the facilities that she has been in and toured, and our principals and staff have been a part of the process. And I think it would have been very easy for another administration to say to this board, I'm sorry, with COVID, there's too much going on, we can't get it done, let's put it off. But the fact is, is that this administration believes in our kids and believes that this is what we need to be doing for our kids, and time is of the essence. This is an urgent matter, as we've seen from the loss of Carver Middle School. We should not go another day without having schools that are safe for our kids and our staff. So this, this is a very, you know, we finally got it done. This board's been through a lot. Some, some of us have been here a lot longer and have experienced a lot of travails. We've been through a lot. And we've been talking about long-range facilities and the needs of these facilities for at least six years. And we finally are here, and it's exciting. And I'm just really proud of the work. And I had to say, I had an opportunity to give a, an interview to, I think, Channel 44 last week. And he asked me what I thought about the process, and I reflected on being a part of that committee. And you know, there were board meetings, but the board really was sat and observed. And at times, we have up to 90 people on this Zoom call. And everybody participated, and everybody shared their opinion. And it was really exciting. And I realized very soon that it was time. It was time to get this done, and it was time to get as much done as we could because you don't know what's around the corner, right? So those are my two cents. And I, Mr. Sykes, if, if you'd like to speak, mic's yours.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, I hope, it's clear to everyone that the economic factors, the economic considerations weigh very, very heavily on us. And we take that with a high degree of respect and adherence to the responsibility that we've been elected to fulfill. I also know that at this time, from all the experts that we have in this room over an extended period of time, including our community advisory committee, I also know that there will never be a better time than the climate that we're in right now to get this done on behalf of our students. No better time. Dusty said tonight, rates have gone down twice. This is an opportunity that we can't afford to miss. If we do nothing, if we don't do this, it will cost us more later on. And that is not, I emphasize, not appropriate stewardship of taxpayer money, period. I think we're going to hear in a little bit, I don't want to take Ms. Davis's thunder away from her, but we're going to hear good news on our tax rate, okay? We've already heard good news regarding the bond impact. This is a passionate thing for our board. I hope this is a passionate thing for our community, as echoed by our advisory committee. So obviously, I'm very much in support of it. I said that weeks ago, I said that months ago. The stars are aligned, it's time to move forward. It's time to give our students facilities what they deserve, as well as our community deserves.
I just want to clear up that I'm in favor of the bond, too, everyone. I don't, it's not that I was against the bond, it was just I wanted to bring the size of the bond down so it could make a little more sense for us that I may be struggling in the city. But I'm definitely for a new Carver Middle School. I want to also make sure the community realizes if the bond doesn't pass, Carver doesn't happen. So I think that's important to put out there. It's, it's we, we don't have provisions, provisions to build a new Carver unless the bond passes. So I think that's very important for everybody to realize that Carver is not just going to be built. It's going to be based upon this bond package.
All right, I, I heard Mr. DePuy call a question. I'll, I'll entertain a second.
A second.
Any discussion on calling the question? Okay, I, I'd like a roll call. Yes, sir. I'd like a, I, I, I'll vote here, let's see, we have a second, a, a call a question in a second. All those in favor of calling the question, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, Ms. Board, will you do a roll call for the vote? On, no. On the motion and the second to approve the bond as presented, as made by Mr. Sykes.
I'll vote yes.
Oh, yes.
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 Passes unanimously. All right, now we got to get this thing passed, right? Unfortunately, the board at this time can't, we can't advocate for it. So we'll be looking for some volunteers for our PAC in the coming days. Oh, boy, okay, I lost my place. Oh, yes, we have to have, we have to approve the order of election. Ah, there you are. So we have our attorney here from Bracewell, Robert Collins, to present the election order. I'm not going to read.
Well, I can make this very quick because Dr. Kincanon, Ms. Davis, all your financial advisor, architects, and the board has already discussed everything that's in the bond order. The bond election order does exactly what Dr. Kincanon recommended, which you just approved. $355 million for school buildings in the district, including new Waco High, new GW Carver, new Tennessee Middle School, and new Kendrick Elementary School. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but this will be on the November 2nd Uniform Election Day in Texas. And then we'll work with Ms. Kincanon, Dr. Kincanon, and Ms. Davis to make sure we get this on the ballot and give this, this is an opportunity to vote on the projects.
All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Collins?
Rob's left a presentation for the board on bond ethics that we'll, we'll get to you.
And I'm happy to answer questions at any time, as always, and look forward to anything you might have.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. DePuy.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Collins. And thank you for your support going forward. All right, now we get to really talk about the reality of building a new Waco High School. And the first thing is to consider, discuss, and take action regarding the selection of a, our contractor, construction manager at risk, Dr. Kincanon.
All right, thank you. I saw Lisa and Coach Love over there bracing, they're so excited. Bama, the three of them are so excited about a new Waco High School. We issued an RFP for a construction manager at risk to build the new Waco High School. We've been designing Waco High School for, how long, Jared? Several months now, four months. And on September 9th, we'll have, we'll bring you all a schematic design. So you and the community will begin to see what the new Waco High School might look like. And we're really excited about it. It's been a really good process. So with the RFP for the construction manager at risk for Waco High School, we had seven responses. And we've evaluated those responses. We interviewed every firm who bid on the project. And I participated in those interviews, as did our architect and, and some others. Dr. Robert Muller, who is our chief constructions administrator, who I'll have, I'll have you meet in just a moment. And we, and Alex Villanueva from our facilities department. So we had really good process, a good number of questions, Cherry Smith as well, that we asked of each contractor, we ranked them, scored them, and selected the team that came up with the, the highest score at the end of the day and had really good conversations with all of them. I, I just want to point out that they were all highly qualified. And it was a really great process, and I'm really excited this evening to recommend to you Rogers O'Brien as our construction manager at risk for the Waco High School replacement project. And then would like to ask you to authorize me to move forward with negotiating and executing a contract with them. And if you want to take action first, we can, or if you would like to meet some of the representatives from Rogers O'Brien first, we can do that as well.
We accept the administration's recommendation regarding construction manager at risk for Waco High School replacement project.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya, for that second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. All right, Dr. Muller, do you mind introducing? These gentlemen, they're all, I met them earlier, but they're all behind the post if they're still there. I see one still here.
Yeah, why don't you come to the microphone, Dr. Muller, thank you. And our representatives from Rogers O'Brien as well. That post is, yeah, we should probably hire them to.
And this is Cisco Hobbs, who is the president of Rogers O'Brien. Thank you, Robert. Dr. Kincanon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Trustees, thank you so much. We are honored and humbled to have been recognized and selected to be your partner in this very important project. With me is our management team, Charlie Hamilton and Braylon Byford. Braylon is actually a native of Waco, so he's coming back home. He's as excited about doing this job as, as any of us. And, and I, and I think I heard one of you use the word passion, and, and that certainly is something that we share for this very important project. We are a third-generation-owned family business based in Texas. We've been here for 52 years. We work out of the Central Texas Division, but we have our corporate offices in Dallas. And we are proud to be Texas builders. We promise to be the best partner that we possibly can for you in being good stewards of your money and in representing you and ourselves in the community and with local businesses and working diligently and tirelessly with your team to deliver the best possible project that we can for your children. So we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, welcome to Waco. Look forward to seeing your work. We got to get it passed first. I can't, I can't put the cart before the horse, but anyway, we're, we're working, we're getting there.
And you have the, this is the entire team that will be working on the project for Waco High School. I'd like to mention that the project manager, Harold Sanchez, is also, is living in Waco, is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And so we appreciated that. We also appreciated the firm's commitment to using local contractors where we can. That's really important to us.
Absolutely.
And then I wanted to mention how impressed we were with the, some of the projects that we saw. We, I was able to tour the Ann Richards All Girls School in Austin, which was very impressive. It was a project that was a rebuild of a campus. So students were actively going to school while construction was happening around them. And that will be the case with Waco High School as well. And so we were very pleased by the work that you did there, and what a beautiful campus. So thank you very much.
Jared designed it, so I'll say thank you on his behalf. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gillery had a, had a question.
Yeah, I want to ask about local talent. How does that look as far as you contracting with some of our local work, keeping those dollars here in Waco?
Yeah, there, there are a, a number of local firms with whom we have worked previously. We've done other work in Waco, not educational, but we've got some pretty deep relationships with subcontractor partners, if that's what you're referring to. And outside of just regular trade partner, we look for other opportunities to work with local companies and local people in our workforce. It's, it's going to take a few hundred people to do this job, so, yeah, there, there'll be some opportunities.
Make sure we had a, had an eye on that.
What was that?
Make sure we had an eye on, on using that local talent.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing more of you. Oh, gosh, important. Next is consideration of the hiring of a construction auditor for the Waco High School replacement project.
Okay, this next item is to hire a, an auditor to review all the pay applications and audit the full project of Waco High School. And this is to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money, and we want to do this all along the way. So we're hiring, we're asking you to hire an auditor now so that the books can be audited from the very beginning. Also, the auditor will help us in, with language in the contract and review the, the, some of the items included with the contract with our, with Rogers O'Brien. I'm going to have to get used to saying that, R.O., I want to say R.O. already. So tonight, I recommend that you approve RL Townsend and Associates LLC for construction auditing services in relation to the Waco High School replacement project and authorize me to execute, execute a contract as presented. Those services will not exceed $100,000. And this is a firm that I've worked with in the past. They do really good work, and they will scrutinize every pay application submitted on the project.
I'll make a motion to approve RL Townsend and Associates LLC for construction auditing services in relation to the Waco High School replacement project and authorize the superintendent to execute a contract as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Is there any discussion, question? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. All right, next. Discussion regarding the process fulfilling the vacancy for Mr. Sykes, who has served as the trustee faithfully for District 5. Mr. Sykes sadly submitted his resignation to us last month. We're very, I'm very grateful to you, Mr. Sykes, for continuing to participate. Our board policy in Texas law allows board members to serve in the capacity to which they were elected until their successor is sworn in. The board has a couple or few options. The board can appoint Mr. Sykes' replacement. The appointment would then have to run for election at the next regularly scheduled election. Or the board can leave the, the spot vacant and call a special election. In this case, the board could call a special election to be at the same time as the bond. Or the board could, which, if the person, if the election, if the board chose that route, the person would have to run in November and run again next May if they so choose. And then the third option would be to leave the spot vacant until the May 2022 election. District 5 was up for election in May of 2022. And so that is the next scheduled date for that spot. So at this time, it's really just up for conversation. We, the proposed schedule, were the board interested in appointing. We've, we announced last meeting, anyone interested living in District 5 to submit a letter of interest by Monday, August the 23rd. And so a proposed timeline would be to review those letters of interest on August the 26th and conduct interviews and make a decision on September the 9th. But that's just suggestions, that's not written in stone, and so. And so open for conversation.
Madam President, I, I think, my, my thoughts is that we, we should appoint somebody into the position just so they can get their feet wet, so they can be a part of the team and go, go forward strong. That would be my suggestion.
I, I just want to say I agree with Mr. Davis, what he said, just appoint, appoint somebody.
President, I, seeing as the, if we were to do special election in November, it would be a fairly tight turnaround because they would have to file in February and then run again in May. That seems like two campaigns. And it also seems like it would, elections cost money. And I agree with Mr. Davis that an appointment makes more sense. It would not cost taxpayers' money. We wouldn't be using funds to do that. And I think that it would, whoever is appointed or however we proceed with that would have to file again in February and run for that May position. But I, I agree with Mr. Vedanya and I agree with Mr. Davis that I, I, in my mind, an appointment makes the most sense.
I think having multiple candidates on the ballot potentially in November represents a certain amount of uncertainty that might in some way jeopardize the bond. I'd rather have somebody in place that has credibility in the community that can help that project pass. So I guess that makes everybody's in favor. Do we vote, or are we just discussing tonight?
I'm, I'm, you know, motions are good. Someone wants to make a motion. I'm all for it. And either, I was looking for. It's an action item.
Okay, Madam President.
Take appropriate action regarding process fulfilling the vacancy for trustee District Five.
Madam President, I move that we, sorry, I don't have the agenda item in front of me, but I, I move that we, where is this? Take appropriate action regarding the process fulfilling the vacancy and move forward with an appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Coraway.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. David, Davis for the second. All those in favor of proceeding with a process for appointment to trustee Five vacancy, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, so, oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Sykes. I'm not ready to give you up yet. Six with one abstention. So the proposed schedule would be, letters as announced a couple of weeks ago are, should be submitted no later than August the 23rd. I think that information, I'm looking for Mr. DeBeere. Think that, is that information already available on the website? Okay, and then on August the 26th, the board will meet in closed session to review those applications, make decisions about interviewing and interview and make a selection on September the 9th.
Madam President, just to clarify, this appointment will be until May. So you will have to, if you're appointed to this position, you will have to run for District Five in May, in the May election.
The appointment is just from now until the May election. Right, exactly. Good point, because some people, you know, think, oh, well, don't have to run. No, have to run. All right, thank you, everybody, for giving your feedback on that. And next is a review and discuss TEA's COVID-19 protocols for public health and remote conferencing. And this is for Dr. Kincanon. But I have to say, just at the outset, that the latest from TEA this afternoon was a big statement on their website that said that they weren't going to provide any guidance until there had been some resolution to the lawsuits pending by and between the governor and school districts. And, okay, so I'm, I've, something else I'm passionate about, and that is our governor putting us in the middle of what I perceive to be a political fight at the expense of our children. And it's, it's really irritating, to say the very least. But we are, we are under an order that prohibits us from mandating masks, even though that may be what we determined in the best interest of our children. And we do not live in a county that has proactively taken steps against the governor's order. The school districts in the state that are in active litigation with the governor right now about the order live in counties that have already taken orders or, or passed orders to assist those that live in the county and their school districts. And in this case, there, we are not, we do not have that luxury. In, we've received a lot of email. I've done my best to respond to a lot of people who have emailed us. And a lot of the email people are referencing Dallas and Houston and Austin. We're not Dallas or Houston or Austin. And while, you know, we'd really like to go out there in principle and fight the good fight, in this game, we're the little guys and we don't have much cover. And, you know, it's all, it's all unfolding daily. Just like last year, the rules are changing daily. And we get left here in the middle. And so it's quite frustrating. And it's, the number of people who've expressed concerns is, I have never received that much email correspondence in my 12 years on the board. And so the concern is real because the threat's real. But we're in a, we're in a bad spot with things the way they are today, the way I see them, but they could change tomorrow. I understand six school districts in the valley filed suit this afternoon against the governor. So things are kind of unfolding all around us. But again, our situation is unique. So I don't, I don't perceive that we have the advantages that the big guys do in Dallas and Houston and Austin. Sorry, I'll stop talking and let you give your report.
Yeah, I, you may could have given it for me. I, I appreciate your comments and your support. This has been really hard, y'all. And I appreciate all of the feedback that we got tonight in public comments and the emails that we've had. And want you to know that we're listening, and this board is listening too. We are concerned about the increasing numbers of positive cases in our community and across the state. And I've spent some time talking to my staff in the town hall meetings that we've been hosting at Waco High School and University High School for our schools. And those who've heard me know how passionate I am about this too. In fact, I think the word I used was ticked, right? Really ticked the state. And we did, we got those TEA guidelines last Thursday afternoon. And they were quite a blow, really, to school districts. So since that time, I've spent some time networking with superintendents across the state. I've spoken to local medical experts. I've met my, with my leadership team and our health services staff to study the guidance and to review our plans. Made some decisions which are in the board packet. I've communicated those to our principals. And what we have is a multifaceted approach to reducing the likelihood that the virus will spread in our schools or other district facilities. And that means going above the standards set by the state. For example, the state told school districts that we were not required to conduct contact tracing this year. And our decision is to continue to identify close contacts and notify our employees and our families if they, if they or their students are exposed. I want to focus a little bit more on face masks than all of the, the other issues that came out in the TEA guidance because that's really what's on people's minds. As our board president said, the governor has prohibited us from requiring anyone to wear face ma- mask. And I want to say at this time, my decision is that Waco ISD will comply with the governor's orders. I don't like it, but we will. We will not require face coverings in our building, but we will strongly encourage everyone to wear a face mask and will provide face masks to anyone who needs one. In May, when we, when the mandate was suddenly lifted without notice, I happened to be with our campus principals out for our very first meeting, back in person, by the way. And we were all shocked. Remember that, principals, staff nodding. We were all shocked. We were together, we talked about it. And at that time, we decided to go ahead and remove the mask requirement in Waco ISD. And our decision was to encourage, but not require masks for the remainder of the year. And we were pretty nervous about making that decision. But we did it because we are, we opted not to fight with each other. We didn't want to fight with each other. We didn't want to fight with our kids and we didn't want to fight with our parents. We chose intentionally to model and, and encourage each, each other to do the right thing in the best interest of our children. And what we ultimately saw for the remainder of the school year was that by and large, the masks stayed on. And pretty much everyone. And there was no fight in Waco ISD. And that's why I believe that a, a mask mandate at this time would be a political statement with little practical difference. I fully expect most employees and students to wear masks, whether they are required to or not. And I've been telling our employees, as I've met with them in our town hall meetings, that I want them to wear a mask. My decision is not to defy the governor's order and fight, but I'd rather build a community of trust, respect, and support. And this staff cares about each other and we're committed to honoring and respecting the health and safety of each other for our children and for our families. We're committed to wearing masks, masks to serve as role models for our children. Again, I've encouraged our staff to wear masks and I know that they will. And that's evidenced by a conversation that I had today with Chief Williams. I haven't seen him tonight. Talked to him after our town hall this morning. And I said, what do you think, chief? And he said, we're good. My team and I are going to wear our masks inside buildings. And so I want to thank chief and his team, for, for the, chief, for his leadership and his team for keeping our students safe and healthy. So in the meantime, we're going to continue to monitor. President Teckel said, things are evolving, they're changing. We could have a change next week before school starts. We have some more time. But we're going to continue to monitor the health and the legal developments. We'll continue to reassess our plans. And we're going to focus on the things that we control, can control. And, and, and I hope to not get into a legal fight over the governor's executive order. I think that would be a distraction from the main job, from what we're trying to do here, which is to educate our kids. And as you could see tonight, we have a lot on our plates. We're recovering from a fire. We're trying to educate our students. We're trying to build new schools and we have a lot of work to do. Encouraging masks is just one of the things that we're doing. And if you've been on our campuses, you know, we've taken a lot of steps to implement safety protocols over the last year, last year, sorry, tongue in type. We're going to do our best to continue to social distance as we can with students back in school. We still have hand sanitizing. We're still, we still have enhanced cleaning protocols. We have increased ventilation. All of those things will remain in place. We still have rapid tests. And that was really big. We were one of the first districts in the state to embrace the use of rapid tests. And we use them extensively last year. We have a good supply left. And I think there's the opportunity to get some more this year. So we're going to continue to use those. We will contact trace, we will notify close contacts, and we will update our online dashboard. And then, of course, we encourage everyone who is eligible to, to get vaccinated. And we continue to partner with the Health District. And we've partnered with Ascension Providence to offer vaccinations. We'll be offering vaccinations this weekend at Family Fest, both at Waco High School and University High School. There are a number of other things there in the memo about remote conferencing instruction. And I, I'd be happy to answer any of the board's questions regarding any of those items. But that's where we are at this time.
Madam President, Mr. Kincanon, to me, I'm a little saddened to hear that we won't be enforcing masks just because we have a huge demographic of kids that are not even eligible to get a vaccination yet. And despite what the governor has decided to do, we know that medical experts tell us the best thing to do is to have our mask on. I definitely don't want to get into a political battle either. But I think we have to think about the safety of our kids first at the same time, too. I think if we think about education, we have to think about the safety of the kids. They have to be safe to be educated. As someone who's lost a, a personal friend and colleague in the district to COVID, I also think about my, our staff, our staff and our teachers that even despite the vaccine, could still contract and be negatively, negatively affected. So I, I understand the reasoning why you're making this decision, but I definitely would encourage you to reconsider it just because of the, the reality of what our kids are having to face and the reality of the, the medical conditions that a lot of our teachers and staff are in. And then even our kids that might have medical issues as well. I know personally, I have one that lives with me that has a weakened immune system. And I can just only imagine him having to go to school in a couple of weeks and being surrounded by kids that we have no idea what they've been exposed to and they're all breathing and playing on each other. So I think it's definitely bigger than politics when it comes to wearing a mask in the school. I definitely get the political angle, but I think safety has to be the number one concern. I definitely understand that we're not Dallas and we're not Austin. But I think whatever negative backlash that we could get as a district, I would rather take that than a loss of one kid. I feel like if we lose one kid or one staff member, it's not worth it. So I think we just have to really see what's more important. Are we willing to risk the lives of our kids and our staff members because we don't want to maybe potentially get in a battle with the governor? Or what's more important? So I think we just have to realize the, the position that we have as a board and as the superintendent of this district is what are we going to prioritize? Are we going to prioritize the safety of our kids and our staff? Or are we gonna back away from a legal battle? And to me personally, I feel like we mandate the mask and we keep our kids safe and we deal with the rest as it comes. But that's just my opinion.
No legally, without, we have no legal authority. And I think, you know, the rule of law is the rule of law. And there are, there are a lot of implications. There are a lot of implications to taking action without any legal authority. We certainly wouldn't be able to discipline staff that defied the order. I think that would create morale issues on campuses. It'd make it difficult for principals if they had certain staff members who were willing to comply and some that weren't because they knew they didn't have to. I think student discipline issues might be more problematic with families who would defy staff. And I, I've struggled with this all day. But I think that it, it places more pressure on our campus principals to keep harmony and also to maintain what we have, from what I hear, already pretty universal compliance with voluntary masks. I think that we are unique in that regard. We are a community that is pretty united and that without mandating masks, we still have most of our students and staff masking without fighting. And so, excuse me, who is talking? So legally, I do think there are, there are a lot of considerations and hopefully, hopefully there'll be some changes that will allow us to do what we need to do. Luckily for us, we've got about 10 days to hope that we get a break here and that we're able to make decisions that are best for our kids. But I certainly am about what's best for our kids as well. And I agree with everything you said. We just, it's hard to go rogue. Hard to go rogue in this situation.
Madam President, I would just like to say, I was in the schools when the mask mandate was lifted. And it was definitely a struggle to keep kids with their mask on because they knew they didn't have to, as well as staff members. So I would just encourage families, mandate your kids to wear a mask if that's what you need to go on. Make sure you get the vaccine. I'm fully vaccinated. My house is fully vaccinated. We wore a mask. So even though if the decision is not for the district to mandate mask, you mandate your household if that's what you need to do to keep your house safe, seriously. Because the kids could get sick, but they could also take it home to a grandparent that might already have underlying illnesses. So just please encourage your individual student or students that you may know or parents that you may know to please go get vaccinated. And if they aren't eligible to get vaccinated yet, please wear your mask. Please wear your mask.
Ms. Cordway, I just, I kind of want to echo what Mr. Davis is saying. I think that this is a day-by-day situation. I think that when we look at Dallas ISD, Houston ISD, they had county judges that basically went against and called it unconstitutional, the governor's executive order. We don't have that here in Waco. It's a different situation. So what we are doing is we have, as a district, basically come toes to the line, meaning mask mandate would be the next thing, but we have done everything in terms of COVID protocol. And I want to echo what Mr. Davis is saying when he says, "Mandate the mask in your family." Do it for your family, but not only your family, do it for your neighbors. Do it for kids in this district. I think we have to rally around what Dr. Kinkanen alluded to. As a community, we have to consider others. If you haven't gotten vaccinated, in your deliberations of whether to get vaccinated or not, would you consider kids 12 and under and their ability to go to school? Your vaccination will help ensure that kids can go to school. Masks are another mitigation effort. It's not just, this is, this is a little bit broader. This is a public health concern. It's not just a school concern. We know that masks and vaccinations mitigate risk. We have kids who cannot take the vaccinations, but we also have kids who need school. They've had a year and a half of choppy academic instruction. Teachers have done their best. Administrators have done their best. Kids have done their best. And we all know parents have done their best to ensure that kids have been educated. But we, as a state, know remote instruction is not an option. Across the state, scores plummeted because of remote instruction. Kids learn best when they're in a classroom. So my exhortation, my plea is that as a community, we rally around our schools so that wearing masks and vaccinations so that our kids can get back in the classroom, so that we can provide safe environments. I'm asking every administrator, teacher, anyone in Waco ISD to wear your mask inside the building for our children. I'm asking families, send your child with a mask. I am personally, I'm only speaking for myself. I am not, I don't lack the courage to say, "Okay, let's mandate, let's mandate masks." But I also know it comes at a great cost, greater than just the here and the now. There are ramifications that could be long-term for future generations in Waco ISD. I, so what I would love to do is come in agreement with Dr. Kinkanen that first, as we're monitoring both the public and the legal circumstances that are happening, we, as we're monitoring those, we still have a week and, almost a week and a half to determine what the next step is. But as we're doing that, would we unite as a community so that our kids can go to school? Could we link arms in a socially-distanced way and say, "I'm going to, okay, I don't want to wear a mask." You know, my daughter said, we were, I had to take her with me to a store and we were going and she said, "Mama, I don't want to wear a mask." I thought, "Baby, neither do I, but we're going to do this to keep you safe and others safe." And my three-year-old daughter wears her mask. So can we please, as we are deliberating, doing this, can we, as a community, rally around our schools, rally around our kids and take the CDC recommendation seriously? If you're, yeah, if you're debating whether to get a vaccine or not, there are plenty of clinics. And Waco ISD is holding some, I think, all this week. Family Fest coming up, we'll have some vaccination clinics. 12 and over, you can, they can, kids can take it. Adults can have their, get vaccinated. But if you're on the fence, could you, in your deliberation process, also consider our kids? In your deliberation?
I just want to point out, too, there is no remote learning. So if a kid contracts the virus, they go home with a packet of work. So last year, we, we seen a drop in numbers and they had a teacher online teaching them the content. They will not have that this year. So they will be sent home with a packet. Am I correct? Am I correct? They will be sent home with a packet of work to make up from that, from the time period that they're out. So we're talking about probably even more traumatic drop in numbers if this happens at a major scale. And if, if, I see a lot of educators in the room, we've seen how fast last year, half of the school could get wiped out. Quick, especially if it's somebody on the sports team that comes up positive. So just, just please consider these things like it's a plea. So if we're not going to, we're not going to make the mask mandate as a board, I'm making a plea to the community and to the staff in the district, please mask up. Please do what you need to do to protect ourselves because we can't afford it as a district. Our kids can't afford it. The academic success cannot afford to be out of school another year with even less instruction than they already had last year. So it's very important. So if we're not going to mandate masks, please do everything you can do to make sure that kids have their mask on.
Let me address remote conferencing instruction. So this new TEA terminology that was introduced last Thursday afternoon. Basically, we can offer remote instruction, but we have to do it at the same time that instruction is being held in the classroom for ADA, the ADA official attendance taking time. We can't use teachers who are teaching in the classroom. So no, teachers will not be, would not be providing instruction remotely and in person at the same time. So that would mean that we would have to hire additional teachers or substitutes. We don't have additional teachers or substitutes. We're working, we, we, we still have a few positions that haven't been filled for August 23rd. So we don't have the ability to offer remote conferencing instruction and it didn't work last year. We struggled, we struggled with our students to get them engaged. It was very difficult. And so our decision is to focus on the classroom and what happens in the school building. When students are absent, they will, those will be considered excused absences if they're close contacts or if they have a positive case of COVID. And we will provide, like we've always done in schools, opportunities to make up work and send home assignments. And that can look like a packet or it could look like your textbooks or it could look like using your device with your learning management system, Canvas or Seesaw. So that can happen in whatever form that the teacher is using in their classroom. So, you know, we're focusing on the main thing. We have to stay focused on instruction in Waco ISD. And we can't hire additional people to do this kind of work. One other thought I had was around medically fragile children. We do have the ability to serve those students through homebound instruction. We have special education homebound instruction and general education homebound instruction. So for parents who have a medically fragile child, there are options and they can work closely with our curriculum and instruction department to get them to the right spot, to get that figured out. So we know we do have students that will need those services. I think that's it.
Which would be kind of a disservice to those kids that would normally be in a classroom, getting that instruction face-to-face, getting that social interaction. So for a medically fragile kid to be forced to go homebound could be detrimental to their student as well and hinder their learning. And then if that's assuming that their parent has somewhere for them to go during the day. So the, the, the point of me coming back is just to show you the amount of issues that can come up for our district if we don't mask up. If we don't get the vaccine, if we don't mask up, there's a lot of serious issues that can happen very fast. We don't have the teachers. We don't have the substitutes. A lot of us, we, we struggled with substitutes last year. A lot of the subs we had in the district are elderly and they will not come to a school during a global pandemic. So we just have to keep these things in mind. And I'm saying all of this to say, mask up. Encourage your kids to mask up. Encourage your friends to mask up. Encourage everybody you know to get the vaccine. That's the most, that's the most I can tell you right now. It's just to make sure that your kids are masked up and make sure we're all doing what we need to do to stay safe.
Thank you. I think my hope is that the administration would continue, as you had said, to monitor the health, the community health outcomes, COVID, being up to date with that. But then also, too, I know there's so many legal battles that are unfolding and it's a day-to-day situation. I know that Dallas ISD, you know, they, their judge issued that, forgive me for all the legal terms, but their judge issued basically that the governor's, was unconstitutional and they're basically provided cover for Dallas ISD. But they start school this Monday. So we're, we're, we still, we don't have a lot of time, but we do have some time. And because things are unfolding day by day, I think it is important that the administration take a look at that. I am wondering if it's possible to see what, if it, if the administration on campuses would be willing to disclose vaccination rates, if that's something that we could do or not, if that kind of gets in sticky territory.
I don't know that we could, I don't know that we could even calculate that really because people are getting vaccinations from all over. And I, you know, that, there may be some HIPAA things that we would have to consider there, so I'm not sure that's feasible. We can get you county rates, though. And we know that less than 3% of children in McLennan County, or 12- to 15-year-olds, excuse me, have been vaccinated.
I just think it's going to be a time for us to unite, like everybody's saying. But I think it's, the most uniting is you at your house. You need to unite with your family and kind of make a decision. The governor's not going to step up. The county's not going to step up. If the, if the school district, we're not going to mandate masks, you mandate your own household, like I said, because you have to protect your kids. Because to me, I understand the legal battle going on. I understand, you know, the penalties that we could accrue if we mandate masks. But to me, I'd rather take whatever penalty if it means protecting our kids. But if we can't do that, you protect your own kid. You make them wear a mask. You, you have the discussion with them. You get them vaccinated as soon as you can.
All right, Ms. Davis, we really want to talk about the budget. I heard this was the meeting for you, for us to adopt the tax rate and consider the budget. I don't know what happened.
So yes, we have finally reached that time of year when we're presenting a proposed budget to you. We will be looking at several of the budgets tonight briefly, since it's so late. Just a little bit about the budget for our new members. There's a lot of budgets that we develop in the school district. Not all of them are actually adopted by the Board of Trustees. The federal funds budgets that we adopt are deemed, approved by the granting agency. So we don't bring those budgets to you for adoption. The three main budgets that you have to adopt on an annual basis is our general fund, which funds most of our district operations, our child nutrition fund, and then our debt service fund. We do have three other funds that you all adopt because we're a fiscal agent for those entities. And that is our Greater Waco Advanced Academies and the McLennan County Challenge Academy and the Regional Day School for the Deaf. Our budgets have to be, we have certain guidelines that we have to follow in the way we develop those budgets. Those are given to us by TEA. We have to have, we have to present a proposed budget to you by the 20th of August, if you're September 1 fiscal year, which we are. And some districts start their fiscal year July 1st, so they have different timelines. And then you have to adopt the budget by the 31st. You can't cut payroll or do anything else without the budget in place. The budget is the district's legal authority to obligate funds. It actually has a legal basis. And then the budget must be adopted before the tax rate. And so we'll do that on the 26th and you will have that item to adopt the budget prior to the item to adopt the tax rate. Now, we have a few issues that are impacting it this year. We talked about some of these last year, too. There is a continued implementation of House Bill 3 that was enacted two years ago. It's further compressing the tax rate. So some of the lowering of the tax rate we're going to look at in a little bit is an outcome of House Bill 3. We have the setting of the INS rate, which is last year. Part of what we'll look at when we look at the INS rate is because last year, we didn't have certified values. Because of COVID, when we had to set our tax rates, we didn't have certified values. We had certified estimates. And so there was some significant difference between that certified estimate and those certified values. And you'll see the impact of that a little bit later on. Interest rates have remained low, so that has really impacted our investment income. We had over a million dollars a couple of years ago. You know, we're getting a couple hundred thousand at this point. We have, we'll talk a little bit about enrollment. I've brought the enrollment, the ADA numbers back up. However, you know, the way things are going right now, that's probably too high an estimate. But we do still have impact on COVID in enrollment and in ADA. The one thing, the positive as far as the general fund right now is that all those ESER funds that are coming to the district, that $70 million worth of ESER funds, is subject to indirect cost, is subject to an unrestricted indirect cost rate, which is the higher of the two rates. That's 10.75%, so for this coming year. We'll be able to pull back into our general fund with no restriction, 10.75% of whatever we spend out of ESER funds and that can be used to help supplement our general fund. On the expenditure side, we have talked a little bit over the last couple of years of our special education funding increasing. And then we, when that increases, we have to increase expenditures for that to keep our maintenance of effort. And then we, when that increases, we have to increase expenditures for that to keep our maintenance of effort. Um, we have expenditures uh for to combat combat learning loss. Most of that's going to be coming out of our ESER funds and not going to impact our general fund as much. Um, although we are expecting some increase in in substitute costs and all that are related also to COVID. But most of the tutoring and the extra work we're doing and some of our extra positions will come from that seventy million dollars in ESER funding. We have salary increases that you guys have already approved, averaging three percent. And then there was additional funding for identified employees to promote equity and meet market. There was benefit increases. Some of those were legislatively mandated. We had uh increases in the TRS contribution that the legislature had passed on. We have unemployment increases that was more due to the unemployment during COVID. That has impacted us. Um, and then we have the group health increase that we approved as part of the compensation plan. There's been increased staffing that we did approve some additional positions in athletics and in security this year. Um, and then upgrade in our student information and finance systems as part of this budget as well. This is our, the trend in our enrollment and average daily attendance. You can see we have a very flat enrollment in Waco ISD. It's been flat over the last ten years that you show here, that I show here. Um, until this past year, when it really dropped off four hundred and seventy one students uh from P E M S to P E M S. Uh, we were hoping that to have some gains there. We did have some gains throughout the year. P E M S is always the last Friday in October. That's where we um measure our enrollments from. So um we, to be consistent, we use that date uh in all of our numbers. And then you see the ADA and you'll see the same pattern pretty much with ADA as you do with the enrollment. This is, um, we we've looked at these numbers before, so I'm just gonna be uh brief on this. For the twenty one, twenty two school year, we're going to use an ADA of thirteen thousand two sixty one. Um, we did have a thirteen thousand two forty one was the ADA we used for budget purposes last year. However, our ADA ended up being um twelve thousand three oh eight. So we were almost nine hundred students less in ADA than what we had originally budgeted. And I had brought the budget down somewhat from um what the projections would actually have uh generated. But so like I said, we're using thirteen two sixty one right now to develop this budget. So this is just here for your information. So just so you know, when we calculate the state revenue that we're getting and about half of the revenue that we get is from the State Foundation School Program, a little bit more, about sixty percent. All of these accounts of students go into that calculation. We look for your bilingual programs and dual language programs, um career and technology FTEs. Those have changed. Where you see gray boxes over by the numbers, that is because there's been a change in the law on how we're getting funded for those areas. Um, either it's gone away or we've got a new criteria. For career and technology, we now have level uh pro- programs of study. Well, we've had them, but we're funded on them now. So if they're not, if students are not in a program of study, we will get one rate. And if they go up to level one or two or three or four, you get additional money. So that's different from what we've had in the past. But they did eliminate the advanced career and technology allocation that we used to get as part of that. Going down, you see our compensatory education and our economically disadvantaged census blocks. That's now since House Bill Three is based on census blocks. And as you can see, most of our kids are in Census Block Five, which is uh the greatest funding that you can get in compensatory education. And any kids that we have in our district that this is new for this year, that are homeless are up before, they would be coded to the census block that the campus was in. But now all of those kids will be in Census Block Five, which again gets the most funding. Um, I, as well, we get a couple, a lot of new things from House Bill Three dropout recovery, the dyslexia enrollment was new, the early education and um ADA was new. Gifted and Talented is back. House Bill Three cut it and it's now back. So we're getting some funding and gifted and talented again. And then you see our special education is by instructional arrangement. So we get um funding weights based on what kind of program our special education students are in. So let's talk about those property values and those tax rates, the thunder that everybody's been stealing all night. So this is our next, our taxable values. As I said, last year, um I have in red there of the twenty twenty was a certified estimate because this um appraisal district was not able to certify our values at ninety five percent. So they could not certify values. They had to give us an estimate. So the certified values were finally done on September tenth. And you can see that difference was quite sizable as far as what they had estimated and what they eventually certified. As a result, when we look at debt service, we had excess collections last year, which is part of why we lowered the rate a little bit in this current, in this coming year. So for two thousand twenty one, our certified values are seven point six billion dollars. Uh, that is a four point two eight percent increase over last year's certified values. And it's a one point eight three percent increase over the preliminary values. This is the first time in the twenty years I've been tracking this number that it's actually increased from the preliminary to the certified. It normally goes down. But this time it did increase. And this kind of just gives you an idea of the ten year increase from two thousand twelve through two thousand twenty one. Waco ISD has had a seventy seven point seven percent increase in values. So and then looking at that operations tax, um maintenance tax rate. Again, House Bill Three has an automatic compression of a rate be depending on what your values are doing throughout the state and what your local values are doing. So our district's adopted M and O tax rate last year was one point oh three nine eight. And then you see those values that come in and they calculate that growth, that four point two eight percent growth that we talked about a while ago. And then our comptroller has, comptroller also estimates the value for us because they have different deductions that they take out of those values from what we get to charge to our, what our taxpayers' um taxes will be based on. And so they come up with their own number and then we, they calculate a rate on that. I'm not gonna go through the detail of this calculation, but to say this rate has now been compressed from that dollar three nine eight down to a dollar two four four. So that rate is decreasing one point five four cents for next year. This is the maintenance and operations rate. On our INS rate, um last year, it was twenty two point four one five three cents. Our original debt service requirements for last year were fourteen point four six one. Um, we added some escrow, or this is for this year. Um, we added some escrow because that was coming down. We had some excess tax collections in this past year. We're going to defees some more debt this coming year and help, help us get ready for the bond election as well. So we're gonna defees about a million seven in bonds probably January, February timeframe and um bring that, and that's the two thousand sixteen series of bonds, I believe, that's still outstanding. Anyway, we'll bring that down some. Um, we will also bring it down by our unencumbered fund balance by about three hundred and nineteen thousand. And we received some state aid as well from the Foundation School Program of three hundred and seven thousand. And then you can see those certified excess debt collections were eight hundred and twenty eight thousand last year. So as a result, our adjusted debt service requirements would be fourteen point seven million. We have also a higher collection rate uh that's certified for us this year. Normally, our collection rate has been certified at ninety six or ninety eight percent. It's certified at a hundred percent this year. So with that, um it gives us an INS tax rate for this coming year of twenty two oh two four cents. And so a total combined tax rate of a dollar twenty four four sixty four. That is almost two cents less than it was for this past year. So it's one point nine three two nine cents less. Now, when we look at the tax rate notice, you'll see the taxes are still going up some, but it's not because of our rate, it's because of the values going up. Cause we are going to, looking a little bit at this, this shows kind of how our property tax rates, and I started with two thousand and five on this chart because that was that first big compression that we got from the state. They um had, they did it in two phases. The max that your M and O rate could be before was a dollar fifty. They were lowering it to a dollar. So the first year it went down to a dollar thirty three. And the second year you came down to the dollar. Now, then you could put in an extra four cents, which our board chose to vote in that extra four cents. So you can see in those years, we went, we were never quite at the dollar fifty. I think we were at a dollar forty four, dollar forty five at the highest. Tried to get us to the dollar fifty. Um, but it went down, that, those two years it went down. So then you see the following year, we had the two thousand eight bond election. And so you voted in, you can see the dark blue, darker blue at the bottom is our INS rate. So it came back up a little bit because of that bond election. And we did increase the tax rate twenty cents when we passed the two thousand eight bond election. So um it's been fairly stable ever since then. And then in two thousand fifteen, we passed a tax ratification election and it went up um that year from the dollar four to a dollar seventeen. So we increased the um M and O rate thirteen cents. And that again has been flat until HB Three was implemented by the legislature and two years ago through two thousand eighteen, three years ago. And so it's been coming down with that automatic compression that we just talked about. So at this point in time, as I said, we're at a dollar two for M and O and about twenty two cents for INS. This is the revenue that we expect to generate now from our property values. Um, six point seven billion, as we talked about, is the ta- net taxable value after all the exemptions and everything come out. And then we have an adjusted levy of about eighty eight point two million. Seventy two point seven six of that will go to M and O and fifteen point six of that goes to INS. Um, our current tax collections is that number because we're collecting a hundred percent. We should also collect about a million three for prior year's taxes and on penalties and interest, about eight hundred and sixty eight thousand in total. I always think that at this point in time, with investment rates as low as they are, we probably make more on delinquent taxes than we do on um investing our our fund balance. We do have, we're, we have tax collections in total then of about ninety point three million. Now of that, we also are still participating in the TIF for another year. Um, and so five point nine million of that money that we collect is just passed through into the TIF. And so the TIF spends that money, we collect it and we send it back out. And you'll see in the budget and function ninety seven on the budget, that's the pass through into the TIF. So our increase in tax revenue for the year is about four point six million dollars for in total three point eight of M and O and about eight hundred and thirty five thousand for INS. Now, looking a little bit at the general fund, as I said, this is our largest fund and by far. And this is where most of our operations are funded from. Um, we have our adopted budget for twenty twenty one. And then we have our projected actuals, proposed budget for twenty one, twenty two. And then you see the increased decrease from the adopted budget and the increased decrease from the projected actual. At this point in time, because we um it looks like we have a total revenues of a hundred and sixty million in, and this is revenues here, a hundred and sixty million in the adopted budget. We're going to earn about a hundred and sixty one point eight million dollars. Um, that is some in our tax revenue. Like I said, they had given us too low a number for our values last year. But a lot of that, we did have a big increase in our uh Shar's reimbursement. And we had some increase in TRS on behalf from salaries. But um the biggest increase was insurance recovery. We had nine hundred and eighty three thousand of that increase was because of our insurance recoveries this past year. This is what we've recovered so far for hail damage and the winter storm damage. This does not include anything now from the carver fire yet. Um, so our proposed budget for next year is a hundred and sixty four point seven million in revenues. That, the other number you can see next to the last line is the amount of money we generate from having campuses in the so, the transformation zone under the eighteen eighty two charter schools. So uh this is down from where we started. We started, we were generating about three million for those campuses. As you can see, this past year it was about right at two million. Um, still not too much different, about a billion eight for this coming year. Looking at the general fund, we've talked about this some, so I'm not gonna talk a lot about our projected actuals. Right now, we are projecting that we will decrease, go into fund balance about ten point six million dollars for the year. Most of that is due to the Paul Tyson Stadium. Some of that is due to that loss in revenue for um the ADA that, the whole harmless amount that T E A was going to make up is now going to come from ESER funds rather than into the general fund. So it does look like we will draw down our fund balance somewhere around ten point six million. As I said last time, I'm kind of anticipating most, most of Paul Tyson will be done. It probably is gonna be a little less than what I have here or a little better than what I have here because I think that's, project's been, had a little bit of a delay. So um we're looking at an unassigned fund balance at the end of this year of right around thirty seven million. Um, for next year, we have um revenues of a hundred and sixty four point seven million, a hundred and sixty five million in expenditures. We will need to move, that's about a three hundred and four thousand dollar um expenditures over revenues. And then we have other uses. That is money that we have to send those, we talked a little bit about some of those budgets that we have, that we're fiscal agent for. The, this money goes to Guam and Guaca to help fund those programs as well as the Regional Day School for the Deaf. This makes up their deficits. And that's six hundred and eighty nine thousand budgeted for next year. So we would have um an ending fund balance there unresi- unassigned fund balance of about thirty seven point six million, a little bit higher than it was in the current year. Going on, this is the transformation zone allocations. Um, this kind of show, those campuses that are in the transformation zone actually generate, as all our campus do, they generate money on their ADA and all those same student counts we looked at. Only our contract with the transformation zone, they keep all of the foundation school money that they generate with some offsets for indirect, for administrative costs and all, and we'll look at those. But this is the ju- the revenue that they're generating. So in total, they are generating um twenty three point eight million dollars on those five campuses. Some of that money stays within the zone to fund some of their operations. They have a centralized special education services. That's a million nine of those funds. And then their operations management is right, uh, just under a million dollars. So uh their total then that goes to the campuses after that is twenty point nine. But then they buy services from Waco ISD, particularly in special ed because they don't have diagnosticians, they don't have a speech therapist, they don't have, they buy dyslexia services from us. So that is a million two in optional purchase services they buy from us. And then they buy administrative services from us. We, we pay their utilities, we pay the maintenance costs. We pay payroll and purchasing and human resources and we cover all the technology for them. So that in total is about fourteen percent of the budget and that's three point seven, three point So that in total is about 14% of the budget, and that's $3.7, $3.5 million that we pull back into the district from that zone funding to help fund our operations. So the net to those campuses is $16.2 million. We had some things that we had to fund this year, some increases in program costs. This is not all-inclusive, but this is probably the big-ticket items. Property insurance, we adopted last month, $62,000. We had, with all the technology that we bought last year, there's a lot of software costs that we started, that we have that recurring cost that we're going to, going into the second year of, that was $280,000. $260,000 in utility increases, a special education increase, as I talked about earlier, revenues are up, so we have additional expenditures there. General fund was $451,000. The salary increases, this is not, we talked about the 3.7 million in salary increases. What this number is here, the $1,003, $1,004, first of all, is just general fund. The 3.7 was all funds. This is just general funds. But I also take salary savings. I look at the different employee groups and what the vacancies traditionally are in those employee groups, and I take savings out when we adopt the budget. So we don't adopt a budget and adopt salaries that we're not going to spend, that we know we're not going to spend, because if we do, then we can't spend them on other things, like supplies and materials or maintenance. So I take those out upfront. Different groups, we have different savings. Auxiliary typically is our highest savings, and our instructional aids are fairly high too. But I do look at those every year and calculate that. And then we had the benefit increases we talked about before. TRS, unemployment, and group health is $950,000 to the general fund. We had some additional positions in athletics we added this year of $328,000, and security guards of $203,000. And then a one-time request for equipment of $600,000 for a new, this is probably the SIS system, student system. Again, this is that salary increase where it kind of shows that raise amount, and then the salary savings I take out by group. As you can see, the total, the raise amount was three, was under that, 3.7, 3.6, 3.6. The salary savings we took out was 2.2 million. Our total projected salaries are $113.9 million in the district. Of that, most of it's in the general fund. As you can see, out of that $113 million, 98 million of that is in our general fund. This is a look at our fund balance. As you can see, the highest it got was in 1314. Our unassigned fund balance was about 31%. It's kind of gone down, deliberately drawn it down in years when we were doing construction or major improvement, major repair projects. This, but I always start way back with 1994, 95, when we almost wiped out the fund balance. So I just, we always wanted to get that in there. We got down to 0.07%, less than 1% fund balance. And so we were circling, in school district terminology, it's called circling the drain. So we were at very low at that point and have built that back up to where we do have a fairly healthy fund balance. While we look at that, I want to remind you, Dr. Kinkanen mentioned it earlier today, we did have the $72 million Silk and ESER funds that we were, have started spending now. We've applied for the ESER III funds. I think we still need to apply for the ESER II funds. Application is due at the end of the month, or September 1, I believe. Now, our whole harmless amount for the general fund was this $2.9 million. That was the difference between what the state said they were going to make sure we got and what we actually generated. So that's going to have to come from that ESER II money if we decide to transfer funds over there. Now, there is a letter from the Department, Federal Department of Ed that says the state can't do that, can't use the ESER funds to do that. So I have not moved anything at this point. We'll see if we actually maybe get some more money as we were promised. But we have, like I said, we've amended in the, or we've applied for the first two-thirds of the ESER II and are getting ready to apply for the, or ESER III, getting ready to apply for that other third, and then we'll apply for the ESER II funds. So the other funds that make up the official budget, we have the Child Nutrition Fund. One of the things I want to say here about the Child Nutrition Fund, it is showing that we're projecting actual of about a negative or expenditures over revenues of $900,000. We did move, we had some excess unearned revenues in our summer feeding program because we kind of went into that summer feeding program in 2020, and we're generating revenues there. So we did move that into our, our Child Nutrition Fund, $565,000. So the net deficit there would be $334,000 for the year. However, the, there are federal stimulus funds coming for child nutrition. We think they're about $800,000, but we don't know when they're coming. So I don't, I don't show them here right now. We kind of originally thought we'd get it during the current year. We did not. We're now being told it's probably going to come in '21, '22. So right now, I'm not showing that, but there's about $800,000, I think, coming for food service that's not here. We are looking next year at spending down $1,004. That's to do that walk-in cooler freezer that we've looked at a couple of times with our architect. We are drawing down the food service fund balance. However, it's going to be drawn down to about 12.4% without that $800,000 coming in. But we have excess fund balance. We have been supposed to draw down the food service fund balance for the last couple of years. When COVID hit, we didn't get that freezer and walk-in cooler freezer done this past year. That was going to meet our requirement that we draw down the fund balance. So we're going to have to justify that again to the Texas Department of Agriculture, and hopefully they don't pull money back from us, because we do have an excuse for not getting it done. The other fund is our debt service fund. We've talked a little bit about that. You see our total revenues of $16.3 million in the proposed budget. We look like we're going to have debt service of about $17.3, drawing down the fund balance about $1 million, because we did end up with that $800,000 additional this past year, as you can see, in the projected actual for 2021, $825,000 increase to the fund balance. So in next year, we're going to use that to pay off some debt. But we'll still have about a 22% fund balance in debt service, which is more than adequate in debt service because your revenues and expenditures are very stable. So our other funds that are adopted by the Board of Trustees, the Greater Waco Advanced Academies, this includes both Guam and Guaca in this schedule. As I said, we do have to make up the difference for those budgets every year. They don't quite fund themselves through our tuition that we charge our district plus other districts. And this, for this coming year, it looks like the budgeted amount will be about $307,000 that we will need to make up from the general fund to cover their expenditures for this next year. The total budget, the total revenue budget for that is 22, $2.2 million, and then expenditures of $2.6 million. The other one is our Challenge Academy. We are also the fiscal agent for the JJAP for the county, and they, they survive on a shoestring budget. I will tell you that Chris Rankin does a magnificent job over there of keeping his costs down. This is also funded with charges to other districts when they participate and send kids to the Challenge Academy. We bill them on a daily rate for participation. So our total revenues for next year are about $918,000, and that balances with our expenditures of $918,000. In the current year, because participation was down so low, we did have to do an additional assessment this summer to us and to the other districts. We are about 75% of the Challenge Academy. But we did do an additional assessment to the other districts and ourselves to help meet the expenditures by the end of the year because we were short of revenues. The last one is the Regional Day School for the Deaf, which we are also the fiscal agent for, the Regional Day School for the Deaf. Again, we do charge other districts for services, we charge them tuition, but that is a very expensive program, and we are not making our expenditures in that program either. Looks like this year, we will probably have to spend about $236,000 to make up the difference. And for next year, I'm budgeting at $381,000. If our revenues come in higher or expenditure or under-expenses, that might be less. But that makes up in the general fund where you saw that operating transfer out, that's those two funds, the Guam and the Regional Day School for the Deaf are those, equal those amounts. Okay. So those are the budgets that we're going to adopt on the 26th. As we talked about before, we have, we have got, received our certified values. TEA did certify our, meant our maximum compressed tax rate, which was the $1.2 that we looked at in the MNO rate. And so we have, we're going to post tomorrow, we are going to, August 31st is our last day to post. We're actually posting Monday for the meeting on the 26th. We have the notice, we'll look at that next, next agenda item. And then we have till August 31st to adopt a budget. And then 60 days after the certified values came out in July 25th, we have to adopt a tax rate. But we will adopt them on the 26th as well as the budget. In, in your budget packet, you have the schedules for the official budgets as well as those other budgets. And then the last schedule in your packet is the posting that we have to put in, post to our website for the proposed budget that compares it with last year's budget on both an aggregate amount and a per-student amount. So that's also in your packet to look at. So that's it for that. No action taken tonight.
So Cheryl, just a brief, a brief summary. So the proposed rate looks like for the combined rate, MNO and INS, going down by 1.9 cents.
Correct.
We're doing a 3% across-the-board salary increase factored in. And we're increasing as a percentage, our unassigned fund balance, less than a half a percent. It's going up.
Right.
Very good. Just want to make sure I'm reading this stuff correctly. Thank you.
That's correct. Now, I might be a little generous on the revenues this year, but we're good.
Hey, stop, stop, stop.
On the next item. So again, on the next item, you just need to set the date for the public hearing and approve that proposed tax rate that we just talked about. Second? I'm so glad we had this budget meeting.
I love the energy and tradition of the last couple of weeks heading up to the start of school, and there are some events coming up in the next week and a half that we're really excited about. The first one is our Ninth Annual Family Fest this Saturday from 9 to noon at Waco and University High School. As Dr. Kinkanen mentioned earlier, there are a lot of great highlights at this event, but one of them is that it's a great opportunity for anyone to get the COVID-19 vaccination and also for our students who need school-required immunizations to start the school year to get those as well. Then next week, we kick off the week on Monday with middle school meet-the-teacher nights. On Wednesday, we have our high school meet-the-teacher nights, and on Thursday, we have our elementary meet-the-teacher nights. Look for specific details about each school on their social media accounts or in messages coming home from principals via email, other methods. And then, of course, Monday, August 23rd, is the date by which you've asked folks to submit their letters if they're interested in seeking appointment to the board to fill the vacancy in District 5. But it's also, and perhaps more importantly, the first day of school for the 2021, 2022 school year. And we're really looking forward to welcoming our students back that day. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. Good night. Thank you, everybody. It's been a beautiful, wonderful evening. Thank you. We'll be right back. Good night. Good night.